Item three, rules of order. We follow Robert's rules of order as well as the rules of order for which the Ellsworth City Council meetings are to be conducted, which we adopted at the organizational planning meeting. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council: October 17th, 2022, regular council meeting; November 10th, 2022, special council meeting; and November 14th, 2022, organizational meeting.
I have a question about the October 17th one. At that meeting when the council voted to go forward with the lease for the police department, we were debating between these two different numbers for the upfront cost, the $800,000 cost and the $1 million cost. And it looks like in the meeting minutes, it was the $1 million that we had approved, which is how I had remembered it. But then in the Ellsworth American and the Bangor Daily, they kept citing the 800 and whatever thousand. So I just wanted to get clarity on that. I don't know if that information got sent to them not right or...
We didn't provide them any information.
Oh, okay.
So that would have been from their watching of the meeting or what have you. But the minutes should reflect exactly what the motion was and what was voted on.
Okay. That's what I thought it was, so.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the minutes from those three meetings.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yes. Item five, city manager's report. Manager Moser.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. So just a few things real quick with the upcoming holiday. It's a short week for City Hall. City Hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday for the observation of the Thanksgiving holiday and to allow employees to spend that time with their family and loved ones. Upcoming events in the city, we have the tree lighting ceremony on November 26th. Many of you may have seen the tree that's out front in the parking area. It's been up since, I guess, last week when it was delivered here. The ceremony will be on November 26th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. right here in the parking lot. The area will be cordoned off to vehicular traffic through a portion of the parking lot, and the parklet will be closed temporarily for that event on Saturday. In addition, there'll be all sorts of things going on in there. Food will be available, book giveaway, letter to Santa, caroling, and a photo booth, just to name a few things. So please, everyone, come out with your families and enjoy the festivities. It happens to coincide with Small Business Saturday, which is all-day Saturday. We encourage folks to come out and shop locally. It's incredibly important to support our small businesses in our downtown and elsewhere throughout our city, and many of them will be offering specials and have door prizes and other things for folks who come out to support them on Saturday for Small Business Saturday and hopefully stay right through to the tree lighting. In addition to that, if you're interested in other Christmas events here in Ellsworth, you can go to ChristmasinEllsworth.com for a list of a whole bunch of different events that are taking place and not to be missed. Certainly will be the Christmas Parade, which will be taking place on December 3rd right here in downtown Ellsworth. And this year's parade is a change from the past years where it's going to be an evening event. So stay tuned for details on that, and you can certainly check out that website for the specifics. And finally, it's with sadness that I have to report to the council that last week, our former retired canine Chase had to be put down due to some health complications. So unfortunately, he served the city for many years as our canine, and he's lived the last few years in retirement with his handler. Due to health issues, he had to be put down the other day, so.
How old?
Fourteen. So that's all I have, sir.
Any questions? All right. Item six, committee reports. Any committee reports? All right, so committee assignments. What I tried to do is to, based on your requests, try to match that up, and I think for the most part, that happened. So the capital planning committee, this essentially is the finance committee, so it's councilors Hanson, Hamilton, Moat, and Beal. The EMS committee, and this one probably just needs a little clarification because we had a couple of committees out there. This committee is formed to specifically talk about the development of ambulance service of where the city wants to go, whether it's developed own or not, to have a committee that's formed around that. So that's what that committee is focused on. And so for that, councillor Hanson and myself. EBDC, the business development, that will be councillor Beal. Historic preservation will be councillor Stein and councillor O'Halloran. Local roads will be councillor Moat, councillor Lyons, and councillor Beal. The harbor commission will be councillor O'Halloran and councillor Beal. Recreation will be myself and councillor Stein. Human resources will be myself, councillor Moat, and councillor Hanson. Streetlight committee will be councillor Lyons and myself. Penobscot Down East Cable Television Consortium, councillor Moat and myself. Solid Waste, councillor Stein and councillor Moat. Library support, councillor Hanson and councillor O'Halloran. And then we have the Frenchman Bay Regional Shellfish. Do we need to reappoint that?
Yes.
So Kathy Picard is that?
Yes.
Will be appointed to that. And with this, if, after hearing this, if there's a change that you would like, this really, I don't think there's any reason we can't have those discussions, but that's where it landed so far, and that's where we'll start. But we can have further discussions as we go along. All right. Item seven, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the agenda where citizens can make comments on any item that you wish. Doesn't have to be on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. You can use this time to speak on an agenda item, but you won't be able to later as well. So generally, people speak on items that are on the agenda, and then when the agenda item comes up, they have the opportunity to talk specifically about that item. Just a couple reminders around the process. Please state your name and your town of residence. Non-residents may be allowed to speak. That's at the discretion of the chairman. You may speak for up to three minutes. Councillor Moat has agreed to be the timekeeper, and so when you hear that your time's up, that will be the end of your remarks. No vulgar, offensive, or scandalous language, disorderly conduct, or profanity is permitted, and that's something that's just for appropriate protocol. So with that, anybody that wishes to speak may go to the podium, state your name, and share what you want to share.
Good evening, councillors. Good work in Ellsworth, Maine. Just a few things you mentioned about community, excuse me, committee memberships. It'd be good if the councils actually went to some of those. I know that some of them don't end up going, but they should be there present because other people have volunteered their time to be in those. It would be good if you could. I'm just saying, it'd be good. Be nice. The other thing was, I had a, I put on local Facebook about the meeting tonight, and there were some expectations, or not expectations, but some explanations stating that the City Hall is not safe to be in. And I want to make sure that we are safe. It was told there's exposure here that could cause lethal situations. I want to make sure with everyone that's here and everyone that saw this post on Facebook that City Hall is safe. Is that correct?
So who made the post?
Abigail Miller, and she stated that her council, the previous councilman, her husband stated that he knew of unsafe conditions. So I want to make sure that the City Hall is safe.
So I can't comment. I don't know what the post is and responding. I don't know, Manager Moser, if you, I mean, that's kind of vague, but if you...
Well, it says hazardous conditions, life-threatening, whatever said on the post. And I just want to make sure, clarify that citizens of Ellsworth as well as everybody else present, that the City Hall is safe to be in and work in.
Yes, the building is safe. I think what she was referring to, which anyone can look at the deficiency report dealing specifically with the police department and some of the hazardous conditions that have arisen in the police department due to the type of work that they do. So I believe that that's what she was referring to. I can't certainly speak for her, but the building is safe for the public and for the folks who work here in it.
Good. That's good. I just want to make sure that was out there. And I do want to comment on one other thing, is that I know that we definitely need a police station. There's no doubt about it. We need upgrades. We need the space. There's no doubt about it. The location that we've been discussed is, I think, is a poor location, and the lease, leasing the building, I think, is not, it's not good. I think we're better off using what we have for facilities or buildings or infrastructure of our own that would benefit the citizens better than leasing or what have you, or using property to build a station on. And that's my comments on that. Just want to throw that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn, could you do me a favor? I want to get 30 seconds. Could you tell me on that, please?
I'm not timing.
Oh, who's not?
Councillor Moat.
Give me a 30 seconds. Just say 30.
Okay.
People appreciate it. Thank you. John Linehan, Ellsworth, Maine. As most of you know, I'm concerned about finances in all areas here in our city. I want to talk a little bit about the, what I consider a lack of transparency that just happened among the council as far as doing the last lease on the new police department. I'm totally 100% in favor of a new police department. I don't think it was handled above board. I don't think it was transparent the way the decisions came up, and I think it's affecting our city in a horrible financial situation. I lease property at the Main Coast Mall right now. For example, I just called the management last week because I know that supposedly we've looked around, checked everything out, and that's the only place available. And I found out that right now at the mall, they have a 12,000-square-foot space available. And I said, well, how much could we get that for the city? And $6 a square foot is what we can get that for. So $6 versus, I think, $1,350, which was the price of the last lease that was on there. I said, well, how much is your escalator? And they said, well, it's 2%. I know the recent lease that was just signed was for 3%. And then I looked at the procurement policy that we have in the city. I don't think it was followed, and that $1 million, the case he was mentioning earlier like that, I believe if that was put out to bid, that would come in at a quarter of a million dollars less than that. So some major money. We can get an extra 3,600 square feet for $40,000 less than what we're paying on our current lease right now. And the city buildup is going to be the same on either one. They're responsible for that. So I think we really need to take a strong look at that. I know there's a lawsuit now that you people can't comment on. I hope that that's upheld. I believe it's legally right, and I hope that that passes in the very near future. Secondly, I know when we were having our city council forum, I was asked that it was impossible to cut the city expenses by 5%. And I'll just give you a couple examples how I think you should cut the expenses. I believe right now on the city website, we're looking for a new city planner. Unfortunately, we just lost an excellent city planner, I believe. However, I believe that is a duplicate department. We have a planning board, we have a code enforcement, and I think the economic development department could be eliminated from the process and save the city at $250,000. So I think it's a duplicate process that doesn't need to have happened right there. So we can eliminate duplicate. The other thing I'd like to see happen is I think we have assistance in all...
You're at 30 seconds left.
30 seconds? Thank you very much. And I really enjoyed my last run for the city council. I had a runoff with John. I congratulate him for getting that. Ended up losing by 55 votes, and I'm really concerned about the direction. I think we just got rid of a couple spenders off the city council. I hope the new three that are on here prove to be spend-oriented and watch while they spend their dollars. So I want to take tonight to officially announce that I'll be running for the city council in 2023, and I'm going to have the same emphasis, reducing the finances, holding expenses down, and reducing the taxes of City of Ellsworth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cara Armando. I'm the executive director of Heart of Ellsworth. I'm here tonight to inform the council and the community of a new program that Heart of Ellsworth is very fortunate to be a part of this year. In 2021, Heart of Ellsworth signed on to be part of a group of nine different downtowns around the state to apply for congressional earmark funding with Senator Susan Collins' office and Senator King's office. In 2022, the Main Downtown Center informed us that we were successful in our ask to do entrepreneurial ecosystem building here in the state of Maine. This program is to build rural resilience, foster inclusive, vibrant, connected communities, and to spur economic revitalization in nine downtowns around the state. So about a month ago, we went with our economic development director and a board member down to Belfast, along with a couple of other groups of folks, and we kicked off the entrepreneurial ecosystem work that we're going to be working on with the Main Downtown Center, National Main Street America, and Heart of Ellsworth. We had a community meeting two weeks ago with our facilitator, Anne Ball, and also with Matt Wagner from National Main Street, who just finished and completed a tour of the nine downtown communities around the state that are going to be working on this work. The overview of the project is to support entrepreneurship innovation, post-pandemic economic recovery by strengthening and growing entrepreneurial ecosystems in nine communities around the state. The project is individualized, specialized to our community. It's place-based, so it's based on Ellsworth's assets and also its areas of further development that have been identified by our asset mapping program that we're in the middle of completing and will be back next month to report on to you folks. And it's really built to connect all of the existing businesses and to find a platform for them to sustain, and then for also for us to grow and to reach out to other businesses in the community that are interested in coming to Ellsworth in years to come. The, you folks, I just passed out sort of a draft timeline of the deliverables and all of the different dates and deadlines in 2023 that we're going to be working toward. And there will be community meetings that will be happening in the Heart of Ellsworth office and in and around the downtown. In total, the earmark funding that we received was $60,000, of which $10,000 will be used to host these community meetings and also to involve the community members as well as city council and municipal workers, as well as, at the end, the concept is, is that there will be $50,000 that we will have to spur economic growth and revitalization in the downtown. And at the end of the community meetings, we will figure out what that project is. So I just wanted to open up if there are any questions. Oh, and I had one question. Sorry, I forgot to ask about the councillor committee appointments. Are all those appointments online?
They will, once they get updated.
Yes, yes. I just have never really looked for them in earnest online, and I was trying to write quick, but I wasn't quick enough for you, so. But if there are any questions about the ecosystem work, I'm happy to answer them now or to take questions via email, text, however anyone has questions.
Is there any idea what that eventual $50,000 might be used for? Or are there examples that other towns, have any other towns already completed?
Yes, great question. So last year, there was a pilot program, three communities, Monson, Skowhegan, and I can't remember the other town. They all sort of did a year of the program to kind of figure out how it would fit into these other nine communities around the state if the earmark funding were received. And I know in Skowhegan, they ended up using the money to create another position inside their organization because what was asked for again and again by the different downtown businesses were all things that were capacity building. So it was wanting more programs or wanting more resources, and it kept pointing back to them needing another staff person. So that was one example. Another example, in Monson, they purchased a little tiny house, and they did an artist and residency program where they rented out, so it's sort of like another revenue stream for their organization because Monson also is an affiliate community of the Main Downtown Center.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Anyone else?
Promise myself I'm not going to do this. I get called and they talk me into it. I just have minor, more generic comments than anything.
Excuse me?
Jim Pendig at Ellsworth.
Thank you.
Generic comments particularly addressed to Mr. Moser. And I wanted to know whether there was any comments prior to the October meeting in September about the relocation spaced for the police station.
I'm not sure what your question is, sir.
My question is, did you discuss it with the council in September before bringing it to a vote in October?
Yes.
It was in an open forum like this?
Yes.
It was on the agenda?
It was a public meeting.
Public meeting.
That was held in September, and it was first discussed in this very room with this council in July, which is when the chair selected several members of the council to be on a public safety building committee, which then met in September.
So they were well aware of the location, is that what you said?
Yes.
Good, okay. Well, when they speak of lack of transparency, it just seems to me that there is a great deal of animosity in this community as a result of that chosen location for advantageous reasons. You find it advantageous to be up in, up in that location. I failed to see it, but nevertheless, I'm not a police officer. I don't have all the information that you have. So that's, that's the major thing that I wanted, but where did you, else did you look besides that location?
So I'm just, I'm going to step in, just in terms of this conversation. As it was referenced, there is a lawsuit that's been filed, and because it's in a legal matter, without the attorney for the city being present, we are not able to engage in discussion.
So we can't, we can't discuss it tonight?
No, you can, you're free to say whatever you want. Anybody can comment. We're just not, because it's a legal process, we can't comment back because it's, it's going through a legal issue. And, and I just wanted to be clear about that so that there isn't any expectation of a back-and-forth process. It's gone to the...
Now, if he can answer the question, then that's fine with me. I mean, if you're in the midst of a lawsuit, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, that's, that's the only reason. That's why I wanted to say, just to be clear with this.
Then I won't ask the question. I'm uninformed because I wasn't here.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate the questions. I just wanted to be clear why, why we're not getting in a debate or a discussion about it back and forth because we can't.
It's not a debate to me.
Yes.
It's a matter of enlightenment. That's it. Thanks.
Matt Welch, Ellsworth, resident. I have a question. I've heard a lot about this new police station, and I've only been in the community as a resident for about five and a half years. It seems odd that Glenn is a city manager, co-police chief. Is that a long-term thing, or is that just a temporary? There's a lot of people questioning that with the new news about the police station.
Well, I think it's important to point out that as city manager, I don't have a vote. So...
Right, right. No, I understand that.
I bring forward to the council ideas, concepts, things that are brought to the city manager's office as solutions to problems that we have in this city.
Right, no, you have a...
And this is, this is one solution to a longstanding problem that was brought forward and was brought to the council, and the council voted, and I don't have a vote. I would equate it to the exact same situation was handled with the water company and the water department's need for relocation and space. That was an opportunity that was presented, and we sought alternatives to their current space. That was brought to the council, and the council voted to accept that lease agreement. It's no different, and my role in both situations was exactly the same. I brought the information to the council, the department heads or a variation thereof, supported the information, provided additional information, and the council made a vote.
And I, and I'm only going to speak as one councillor who was part of the process when Manager Moser was hired, so I'm not speaking on behalf of everybody else that voted, but it was, it passed. The, the decision in terms of maintaining the oversight, Manager Moser maintains oversight of every department regardless. And in, in terms of the police chief, he also put in place a structure where the day-to-day oversight in terms of supervision administration, all of that was managed internally, just like all the other departments. So there's that separation that existed, and the council at that time felt, Manager Moser, not only his police background, but he has a background in government. His degree is in government. So it was a rounded approach. He had, he brought to the table a lot. So it was a discussion in terms of what the council felt was appropriate in terms of managing that, and it was also a cost savings in terms of reducing some of the costs by not having a separate person stepping into that role. So there was a lot of factors that went into that.
Is it a short-term play or is it a long-term play?
It's, it's part of the contract that was established with him.
Like, is there a contract meaning there's an end date? If you have a contract, you have a start and end date. Is there an end date to the dual role or...
There's, there's an end date to his contract, and as, like every contract in the city, when it comes due, there'll be negotiations around the contract.
Yeah. Is that public knowledge, the date?
Yeah, January 24.
January 24, and that saved the city a certain amount of money.
A significant amount of money.
Right.
My salary is comparable to what a city manager salary would be. So you're getting my role, what I do in the police department, which again is not day-to-day operations, but the general oversight of the policies and procedures and the budget needs of the department for the price of a city manager.
But, but since I've been here, that planning position has been, like, a couple people, it's been open. If we could free up your time instead of two positions to spend a little bit of money, we might save on losing other people on your staff. You have a lot on your plate. I'm not saying you can't handle it, but that's a lot to ask someone in this size of a city. I mean, we're a growing city. It's, I don't, I've heard a lot from other people as well, other...
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else like to speak? Seeing no one, we will move on to the next item. Item eight is presentation of awards, and one item we have is a proclamation, City of Ellsworth Small Business Day proclamation dated for November 26, 2022, whereas the City of Ellsworth, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 33.2 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.9% of all businesses with paid employees in the United States, responsible for 66% of employment growth over the last 25 years, 12.9 million net new jobs, accounting for two out of every three jobs added to the economy. And whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, and 66% reported that the day makes them want to shop small all year long, and 54% reported that they dine or order takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or café. And whereas 67 cents of every dollar spent in a small business stays in the local community, and small businesses donate 250% more than larger businesses to local nonprofits and community causes. And whereas 78% of small business owners say their holiday sales likely determine whether they can stay afloat in the next year, and Small Business Saturday helps spread the message to consumers, with 70% of consumers reporting that Small Business Saturday makes them want to encourage others to shop at small, independently-owned retailers. And whereas the City of Ellsworth supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and are critical to the overall health of the United States. And whereas organizations across...
According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 33.2 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.9% of all businesses with paid employees in the United States, responsible for 66% of employment growth over the last 25 years, 12.9 million net new jobs, accounting for two out of every three jobs added to the economy. And whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, and 66% reported that the day makes them want to shop small all year long, and 54% reported that they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe. And whereas 67 cents of every dollar spent in a small business stays in the local community, and small businesses donate 250% more than larger businesses to local nonprofits and community causes. And whereas 78% of small business owners say their holiday sales likely determine whether they can stay afloat in the next year, and Small Business Saturday helps spread the message to consumers, with 70% of consumers reporting that Small Business Saturday makes them want to encourage others to shop at small, independently owned retailers. And whereas the City of Ellsworth supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and are critical to the overall health of the United States. And whereas organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ellsworth hereby proclaim Saturday, November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in Ellsworth, Maine, and be it further resolved that the City of Ellsworth urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Dated today, 11/21/22. And I would just comment that last year, in terms of Manager Moser references in his updates, it was a huge success last year in terms of the number of people that turned out in the community for the events on Small Business Saturday. They coincide, they, they were coordinated by many organizations, Heart of Ellsworth, the Chamber of Commerce, the Recreation Commission. And that's happening again this year with all the planning. So I certainly encourage everybody to get out to those events. It was a great turnout, and I think the businesses fared very well in, in the city. Unfinished, unfinished business. Abandoned dangerous building located at 16 Fifth Street.
Good evening. I'm Sue McLean, Tax Collector. I'm here tonight to continue the discussion that was started at the October 17 council meeting. In your packets, you should have information that was presented by Lori Roberts, our code enforcement officer, in reference to the property located at 16 Fifth Street. This property foreclosed due to non-payment back in 2019. And, well, it was foreclosed because of the 2019 taxes. And we were trying to determine at the last meeting whether we wanted to keep the property or whether we thought it should go out for sealed bid. But at that time, the council wanted to know if there was any family interest or the, they wanted more information. Shortly after that meeting, within the next day or so, I was contacted by two different people. The first person was a nephew of the prior owner, interested in purchasing the property. And then a day or two later, I got contacted by the son of the own, prior owner, who was interested as well. So at this point, we're kind of wondering what to do with the property. Do we want to go ahead with a sealed bid sale? Or do we want to sell it to, back to the family for the taxes? We have taxes, water and sewer, and an engineer, an engineering bill that is also paid for by the city. We don't know what to do. And if we go with the family, who do we sell it to? I guess that's what I'm here to ask. What is your preference?
Counselor.
In the attached document, oh, what's it called? I don't even know what this adopts. Oh, it's the, yeah, Maintenance Administration and Disposition of Tax Acquired Property. In Article Three, A, it says, and I think that's asking this question about selling it to the, to the former owner, says this article applies only to prior owners who personally reside on the premises of the tax-acquired property at the time of the tax lien, matured and continuously thereafter up to including the time of petition for repurchase. I may not be reading that right, or maybe I don't understand it right, but that made it seem to me like we couldn't just give it to these other family members for the taxes. Do you think that's right?
Well, that's how I understand it. I think though, I don't have that right here in front of me, but I think there's a limit, a time limit to that. And once you go beyond that time limit, you can do what you want, but-
Whatever.
But I don't really know that for certain. That's just how it's been interpreted in the past. Nobody's living in the house right now. Even the, the son of the prior owner, he, he left the property as far as I know and from what I've been told by family and neighbors, that he left before it even foreclosed. And there's nobody there and there hasn't been. It's been abandoned. I'm not against selling it back to family. I just need to be advised what to do.
Counselor.
Has any of the process for tax-acquired property and the ordinance been followed yet? Has it gone to a bid yet at all?
No.
And personally, I think that we should, it needs to go through the ordinance process if we haven't done anything.
Yeah. No, all we've done is foreclosed on it. Yeah.
We brought it last month for guidance from the council whether they wanted to sell it because we, there are properties throughout town that we, that we still own, that we, the councils have decided for one reason or another that they didn't want to sell.
Yeah.
So that was the guidance that we were seeking last month. And there was just some questions as to the, the family interest and foreclosure process.
Counselor's time.
There were also, as I recall, wasn't on the council yet, but there were some creative proposals discussed about including restrictive covenants of some sort in the deed, whether this could become, you know, a single-family home or long-term rent possibility written into the deed to help with our worker shortage.
Mm-hmm.
Was that looked into at all to anyone?
Well, we, I, I did have a follow-up conversation with Economic Development, Jana Richards, about, because she was the one who proposed that as, as an option. We didn't really do much beyond that because of the family interest and the, you know, the not knowing what direction the council would want to take with dealing with the property. But certainly, if it's the council's desire to put it out to bid, then Jana and I will continue to work on that potential to explore that as a, as an option, as part of the bid process.
Counselor.
I had read that too, but it's a, it's a pretty small lot, isn't it, that it's on Fifth Street?
It is. It's a small, I mean, it's a single-family home, like-
So we'd only be, if we kept it and did something, it would be just for one really family. It's not like a, a place where you could put a duplex or even an apartment house or anything.
I think, I think the thought process was rather than leaving it exposed to the potential of someone purchasing it, rehabbing it, and then let's say Airbnb-ing it and that not really providing any relief to, say, you know, young families who may be looking for a starter home. You know, that, that was kind of the conversation around, is there a way that we can, to some degree, dictate what happens to the property? So it doesn't turn into a rental, you know, money-making venture for someone, but it does in fact provide some relief to, you know, the folks who are looking for housing in our area, permanent housing.
Counselor.
Sorry. I just, I, I mean, if the family has an interest in it, personally, I would think putting it to bed and allowing them to do that, I, I don't feel that if, if that's not in an ordinance, that that can't be Airbnb, have an Airbnb in, in that property, that we shouldn't be keeping property to prevent something that's allowed by ordinance.
Well, the idea wasn't for us to retain possession of the property. The idea was to put some sort of restriction on the deed going forward with the sale of the property. So that if someone bought it, they would go into it knowing, okay, I'm bidding on this property. I'm not going to be able to turn around and Airbnb it. It's going to have to be a single-family home. But again, that was something we were just talking about exploring. We don't even know, there's no precedent for that. So it was something that we were just going to look into further if, you know, if it was decided that we wanted to put the property out to bid.
Counselor.
So based on the ordinance, though, I don't believe you can put any covenants on it. It's only municipal claim deed to whoever the owner is. Just want to state that as well.
Counselor.
I personally feel that if a family member's interested in it, it's probably best that if they can come up with money and pay it, that probably the son first. And the reason why I say that, if somebody buys that property, I have a friend right now that owns a piece of property they bought at an auction, and he's been waiting for five, six, seven years for it to clear. It's going right down the tubes. And he's spent thousands and thousands of dollars trying to get it cleared the same way. All that person has to do is file anything, and he's held up for years.
Counselor.
Last month, I asked the question if there had been, reach out to the people that owned it. In your conversation with the son or nephew or what have you, did you learn anything about the people that lost it? Are they interested in this at all?
The, the prior owner has passed away.
Okay, okay.
And it was the nephew, it was his nephew that contacted me originally, and then the son a few days later. We had sent out all the required notices and liens and demand notices, foreclosure notices, automatic foreclosure, and never heard a thing from them until it had foreclosed. But now we are.
These notices were sent to a deceased individual?
They were sent to initially because that's who we had to send it to. And then we were sending it to the son in the son's name. I think it had gone through probate, but I'm not 100% sure about that. I look at so many. So, but somehow it got, so that it was going in the son's name. I'm not sure he was getting them though, because I don't think he signed, well, what was happening during some of that was the post office was signing off on our green cards, our return. And they would sign their name and then write COVID under it. So I have to assume it got somewhere, but I didn't get it back. So I got the card back.
Did they have a copy of the letter from Mr. Karst?
They should, yes.
Because if you, if you look in your, in your packet with the letter from the son, he acknowledges in there that, "Since my father passing, I regrettably admit that I have been negligent in my financial responsibility for the property." And it goes on, so.
That should be in your packet, is it not?
I don't see it.
I can make copies for you, but I mean.
Counselor.
Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to sell the property by sealed bid according to ordinance 10. And on the side, and very much encourage the son to put in a bid.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion. Counselor.
Can we just add something as part of the motion? It has to say, the council has to say when the bids are due back?
It's part of this motion we do?
Mm-hmm. So I was looking at like December 30th, so that gives time for the, all the information to be back to the tax collector and treasurer. So December 30th.
I'll edit my motion to, what'd you just say, December 20?
Bids will be due by December 30th, 2022.
Counselor.
Second.
Counselor's time.
Is there a mechanism to help the family member with that sealed bid? Or is it just a hope that the family can, is there any official mechanism, like a right of first refusal or something for that?
I don't believe so. No.
No.
But we do have, the, the council does have the right to refuse any bid. So it would be, the bids will be brought back to the council and ultimately the council decision as to what bid is accepted.
Further discussion. Counselor.
So we're not 100% clear if the communication got through at the right time. Is that the gist of this whole thing?
I, I guess you could say that. We have, you know, we did everything we were supposed to do. I, I can guarantee you that. We got signed cards back, but again, the post office signed them. I, I can only say that we have had some interest in that land. So I'm assuming that the family or the son knew at some point, but he didn't contact us until just recently.
Could we hear this letter before we fill them?
I'd like to read it.
I've got it in my pile here.
So it was addressed to myself and the city council. My name is Kerry Karst. My parents were Kenneth and Kathleen Karst, and they owned 16 Fifth Street. I grew up in the home, and my parents lived there until their passing. I am the sole heir of the property and estate. Since my father's passing, I regrettably admit that I have been negligent in my fiscal responsibilities for the property. Life just got in the way, and I didn't follow through. Without trying to excuse anything or shirk responsibility, I honestly believe that this was partially due to the heavy loss and the complications of closing the estate. I was also dealing with my personal issue, issues and didn't focus the energy that was required to finalize the details of his distinct. I would, I would like to make amends by paying all owed back taxes, sewer and water bills, and any fees incurred due to my delinquency. I earnestly ask the city and the city council to honor my request and not put my father's property and my inheritance out for bid to the highest prospector, who will most likely destroy what little remains of the property and my memories. I truly want to make this right and will take care of all matters at our, at our earliest convenience. I earnestly request that we make things right and fulfill my father's wishes for the property. Unfortunately, I, he wasn't available to come to the meeting.
Thank you.
Well, he does address that he knew, he knew what was going on and that he, he, he had a financial responsibility for the property and ignored it for whatever reason. I mean, I can understand his reasoning, but.
And this process you said started in 2019?
It, no, it was for the 2019 tax bill. So it was done in '21, I believe.
Further discussion.
I mean, I know I made the motion, but I, and I do feel badly for the family, but we have an ordinance. And the ordinance says shall. It doesn't say may. And I don't think we have the right, if we start changing ordinances, to make changes arbitrarily.
And I, I think the, the letter is important as we consider this going forward as well. That, that becomes helpful in terms of the, the process. But I think I agree in terms of following the process and, but taking under advisement, strong advisement, that, that information. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Two opposed? Motion passes.
And just to be clear, this is a sealed bid motion to do the sealed bid?
Yes.
Just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Consent agenda, there are no items for that. So new business, public, public hearing and action on the following business licenses. Stephen Curtin, DBA, Steamy Buddha Cafe, 50 Church Street for a new state liquor license, class one, two, three, and four, and upgrade to city class C license from Victor. Since this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If anybody would like to comment on this, let me do so. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Would you approve that? Steamy Buddha?
Is there, sorry, discussion, is there a representative here? Just Kerry's.
So you have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Ryan Launer, DBA, Strike and Slice, 25 Eastwood Lane, Suite 6, for a new- for a new city class C license and state liquor license, class one, two, three, and four. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to speak on this may do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Motion to accept the license.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second discussion?
Did we verify that, like, all taxes are paid and all the requirements have been met for all of these licenses? Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. ETC LLC, DBA, Dion's, 35 Eastwood Lane, for renewal of a state liquor tennis club, class three and four. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody who wishes to comment can do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Motion to accept the license.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 11, council order number 112100, request of the wastewater superintendent to award a bid for a new truck.
Good evening, councilors. Mike Karst, Ellsworth wastewater superintendent. I'd like to say welcome to all our new councilors. Congratulations on winning your elections. I come for you tonight to talk about, during the last budget, we budgeted for us to be able to get a new truck for the wastewater treatment plant. And so, I received three prices. The price that I'm recommending is from Darling's Ford, and the amount of $56,500, and it comes with a plow already installed. Currently, the treatment plant, we have one six-cylinder, two-wheel-drive truck. And then we have a four-wheel-drive truck. They have five people. And currently, anytime we have a storm, I'm the one that gets called, is the one that comes in and plows everything. It's just inefficient. During the day, we have the other guys, they're gonna have to take the truck, and they're gonna have to go out and plow all the pump stations and everything out. The six-cylinder is not useful in the wintertime. We have snow tires on it, we put weight in the back of it. It's been stuck multiple times, it's been damaged for us pulling it out multiple times. So, that was a decision behind trying to get another vehicle that is better for us in the wintertime and that will allow multiple people to handle the plow duties instead of one.
So, just one question, because I think this probably is a question that others might have from the community, is you're managing plowing for assets related to your operations?
Yes, we have the wastewater plant, and then we have eight pump stations throughout the city that we also maintain and plow after snowstorms and whatnot. And then, of course, if there is a need or a shortage with highway public works and they ask, if something, you know, it doesn't happen very often, thankfully, but if they need me to go plow some city streets or something because they are short on people or they got the plow truck broke down, or whatever the case may be, then we would always, we, I've done that before, too.
Is, has that always been the, the process in terms of public works not plowing your assets?
So, public works will, during a storm, one of the plow trucks will come up through the treatment plant, just plow a swipe to clear the road and through the courtyard behind the building. But typically, the plow trucks are too big to operate in the spaces that we have to operate in. And so, they just can't maneuver to deal with that kind of stuff. So, we're, we deal with that stuff.
Counselor O'Callaghan.
So, is, what year is the two-wheel-drive truck that, are you replacing or are you adding?
We're adding. And the reason I'm, I'm asking to keep the, the two-wheel-drive truck is because I just feel it's more efficient for us when we have to go to Bangor or we have to travel for trainings to take a six-cylinder vehicle, that's a lot cheaper on fuel, to go do that type of stuff. With five people on staff now, you know, if we have a situation which does come up where, especially in a storm or whatnot, if I have guys at one pump station, I have to respond to a pump station or I'm at City Hall for a meeting, whatever the case may be. In the wintertime, the only thing that leaves is a six-cylinder truck. And a six-cylinder truck in the middle of a snowstorm is not useful. So, I'm asking not to get rid of the two, I think it's a 2006, a 2012. But I'm asking not to get rid of the six-cylinder because anytime we make trips to Bangor or we travel for training, it's ideal for us to take a six-cylinder vehicle rather than an eight-cylinder four-wheel-drive pickup truck.
If I may, what year is the existing plow truck?
2018, yeah, 2017, ended in 2017. So, we've had it for about five years now. A little over five years.
Do you have mileages on either of these trucks?
I do not have the mileage on the six-cylinder. The plow truck is around $50,000.
Thank you.
Counselor Mott.
How much did you have budgeted?
Fifty. So, our budget was based on the last truck, similar to that, that we purchased, which would have been, I believe, Highway, and around $42,000 was what they purchased theirs at. So, I figured $42,000 plus a plow would be roughly $50,000. But, as we all know, the price of vehicles, the price, getting trucks now, like, if you try to order a brand-new truck right now, you're waiting a year. That's how long I think it took Reggie to get his truck. And so, that's where the number came from for the $50,000. It was forty, roughly forty, we figured around $42,000, like, similar to the Highway truck, and then plus a plow. I figured probably around $8,000.
Counselor O'Callaghan.
One more question, is any of these used for personal conveyance for people going back and forth to home?
Me. I use that, I use one of the trucks.
The one that's inexpensive to run or the expensive one?
The expensive one.
The expensive one.
And the reason why, I mean, in the summertimes, I guess it wouldn't matter, but I live within the city now, so I'm only, I'm a mile away from the plant or so. But, I get every call that ever comes out. I've gotten every call that comes into the city for the wastewater plant for the last seven, 17 years now.
So, there's no truck will have personal conveyance, too?
Probably, for me. Like, the other, the other, the other employees don't take their trucks home. Don't take the trucks home. If they're on call and they wanted to take their trucks home, I wouldn't stop them, but they don't.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Move to approve the request to award the purchase of a new 2022 Ford F-250 regular cab, four-wheel-drive truck, as specified for the wastewater department to the lowest bidder, Barney Ford, at a cost of $49,260.
That's not correct.
No.
It's this one.
F-350 regular cab, four-wheel-drive truck, as specified for the wastewater department to the lowest bidder, Darling Ford, at a cost of $56,500, to be paid from the wastewater capital improvement account.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. Further discussion. So, I guess the, the only, just in terms of, and you've talked a little bit about this. In, in terms of the, the need to replace, when you're talking about replacing a vehicle, can you, can you just say in terms of what, if it's not replaced, what's, what, what is the result of not approving this?
So, I mean, I mean, it's basically status quo, so, so we've gone from four employees to five employees. I'm on call all the time, so anytime there's a snowstorm, I'm the guy that's gonna come in and plow everything all the time. And in the, during the day, I'll come in and plow the plant and whatnot. And during the day, the next day. That truck would get taken to go plow whatever areas of the stuff we need to plow, and we're still only left with a six-cylinder. So, if there is an emergency, we're stuck with a six-cylinder. And it's, so, for example, I don't know if anybody remembers, but a couple of years ago, we had an incident at Main Street and High Street where a manhole broke, and there was an open hole in the road. So, we had to shut Main Street down. And we had police up there blocking the intersection because we had to repair it. It was during a snowstorm. So, so I went up there, and then I had to, I had to go up there, we had to get the excavator, but we didn't have a manhole. So, we had to send the guys on the two-wheel-drive to go find a manhole. They got stuck. So, I had to leave Main Street, go pick them up. We had to go find a manhole, go back to Main Street so we could make the repair. The next day, we had to go try and pull the two-wheel-drive truck out. The strap snapped, smacked the back of the six-cylinder truck, broke the taillight. I mean, it's, it's, it was ridiculous. I'm just saying. You know, it's the middle of a snowstorm, and guys are all over the place. The police got the intersection shut down, they're freezing, directing traffic. It was crazy. I actually got to drive one of the police cars back to the station that night, though, so.
I wasn't there, so I.
Now, nobody was there.
I can't be held accountable.
Now, this was just a made-up story. It was an emergency. I couldn't leave in the middle of the intersection. They had an emergency. It was an accident.
Did you?
Yeah, that's right, that's, that's what I would have, that's what we, wouldn't you?
Yeah, lights, sirens, everything.
All right, further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? One opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Oh, and happy Thanksgiving.
Item 12, public hearing and action on increase to the water department rate for consumers.
We've got some folks joining us on Zoom. For this agenda item.
Hi, ladies, can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry, I gotta get everything organized here. I want to start off with anybody in the audience that hasn't signed the sign-in sheet and is here for the rate case study. If I could get you to sign this before you leave, that would be great. I'm Lisa Cyclich, I'm the public works director for the city of Ellsworth. I'm also, we have Reggie Winslow, the superintendent, who is also gonna be helping tonight. And then we have Kathy and Kirsten from Main River Water, who helped us do our rate case study. And part of this process is a public hearing, so I'm gonna let them do some introductory, and then we'll go into the public hearing.
Do you have the statement?
Sure, would you please get it?
We need to open the, have the chair open the meeting, the public hearing. Just partying.
So, this is a, a public hearing on the rate increase, so I will open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open.
Wonderful, thank you. My name is Kirsten Hebert, and I'm the director of Main River Water Association. We are a trade association of water and wastewater utilities, and we help many utilities with their rate-making process. So, in that the water department is regulated by Maine's Public Utility Commission, there's a very specific process to rate-making. And part of my job tonight is to read a very tedious statement to you, almost word for word, but nonetheless, it is a statement that is required by the Maine Public Utility Commission. So, so bear with me, I will get us through this. So, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide information concerning the proposed rate increase in the rates of the customers of the city of Ellsworth Water Department and allow for opportunity for customers to ask questions as well as questions from the public advocate. The hearing is to be held pursuant to Maine revised statutes, Title 35A, Section 6104, and Section 7B 3 of Chapter 120 of the Public Utility Commission's Rules and Regulations. Notices of public hearing were published in the Ellsworth American on the weeks of October 31 and November 7, as well as individual notices were mailed to customers. After taking comments and questions from you at tonight's hearing, the city will consider those comments and will, within 30 days, file a formal rate schedule with the Maine Public Utilities Commission. The formal rate filing by the department may be investigated by the Maine Public Utilities Commission in accordance with Title 35A, Section 6104. The Maine PUC has taken no position and has made no determination concerning this proposed rate increase. Pursuant to Title 35A, Section 3, a customer has a right to request additional information relating to present and proposed rates from the department, the right to an open and fair hearing, and the right to assist assistance from the public advocate. Customers also have the right, under Title 35A, to petition the Maine Public Utilities Commission to suspend and investigate the department's rates pursuant to 35A, Section 310, if on or before December 21 of this year, 15% or 1,000 of the department's customers, whichever is less, file with the Ellsworth City Clerk and with the Public Utilities Commission. And there's an address that's listed in this notice that is, is able to be provided to you. A petition or petitions demanding review by the Public Utility Commission of the proposed rate changes. Signatures on the petition filed pursuant to Section 7 are invalid unless accompanied by the printed names and addresses of the signers. Upon request, the department will provide customers with a petition forms that includes space for the signatures and printed names and addresses of the signers. And Lisa, I would look to you to ask if you could please just identify where the petition will be kept, should someone look for it?
Yep. The petition will be kept at the city clerk's office here at City Hall.
Thank you. That, that concludes the opening statement, as enjoyable as that was. And then we can certainly get into the meat of the matter of the actual proposed rates themselves. With that, Kathy, I'm gonna mute myself.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen here, because I think, I hope everybody got a copy of the handout that I sent to Lisa, but just in case, I will, I will share it on the screen and go through it. I'm gonna go through some of the financial information and how, how we arrived at the increase that we did. Bear with me a second. Let's see. Okay, did that work for everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. So, the water department is, is a part of the city, as we know, but as Kirsten pointed out, it's, it's also a regulated nonprofit water utility. And because of that, the finances are regulated by the Public Utility Commission, and the system of accounts are dictated by the PUC. So, this, this first page outlines the expense accounts, the operating and maintenance and other expenses of the department. And I'll start, I guess I can use my cursor. So, over on the left here, these accounts moving down are the various accounts as required in this format by the PUC, and they represent the operating and maintenance expenses. So, basically, accounts 601 through 675. And these are the, the way they want it spelled out in the categories. So, they ask for three years of financials. We have 2019 and 2020 as actual, and 2021 is still in un-audited final form. So, we've included it that way for purposes in the rate case. So we've included it that way for purposes in the rate case. And then there's the adjustment and the pro forma. I'll move over to this last column on the right. The pro forma expenses are, are basically what is needed by the department for the next two to three years, which can vary depending on circumstances like, in this case, having to rent space for a few years. Any upcoming projects that might have been included, which there is one kind of a debt. Um, any unexpected increases in expenses or decreases in revenues. Basically, water systems across the state are all struggling right now with, with increases in expenses and mostly in salaries, purchase power, which is electric bills, chemicals, and materials and supplies. These have just gone up exponentially and have put a lot of departments and districts in, in need of rate increases. So all these expenses add up to the budget that was approved by the city. I'm not sure when, probably within the last couple of months for 2023. And the adjustment column, it shows the difference between the pro forma and the last year tested, which is 2021. So if you scroll, I'm gonna scroll down, uh, there's your total expenses. And then below that is, is debt service. The department has, will be borrowing $460,000 for a project at Branch Lake Diao and also for Radio Read Water meters. So that you can see where the increase in, in debt service is principal and interest. So there's your expenses and your debt. The PUC doesn't allow water systems to have excess funds. So they require the utilities to use debt to finance improvements. Or in lieu of that, you can create a temporary surcharge or you can save money through a capital reserve fund. And in this case, they, neither of those are employed, so it's, it's just adding debt. And the bottom is how you calculate the revenue requirement, which is the revenue needed for the department to sustain itself and collect rates. So these numbers, that bottom number is made up of, of the operating and maintenance costs that are normally measurable that we discussed in the pro forma, the debt, the principal and interest, and depreciation. Which I know, I wanted to talk about that a little bit because it's a really important number for water systems. In, in business and accounting, it's not necessarily a quote-unquote "real expense", but in water, it is. It's, uh, the PUC allows systems to collect depreciation through rates. And it's really necessary to, to save for the replacement of assets as they mature because so many water systems have very old infrastructure, old, old pipes, old mains. You can think of it like a hundred-year-old house where you, you know, you need to keep continuing to put money into it for upkeep. And ultimately, it will keep your rates lower in the long term. So, so it's an important number and, and expense. And the last part of it is a contingency allowance, which the PUC allows 5%, which is that number down here. Um, basically, you need enough money to provide services and fire protection. But if anything unforeseen happens to the system, you need cash to pay for unexpected repairs. So they allow that 5% to be included in. So all that in total makes up the total revenue requirement, which is the 1,005 number. And that's what they need to operate. I don't know if we want to do questions in the interim or wait till the end. Um, but if anybody has any, I'd be happy to answer.
What?
This page.
Yeah, why don't you keep going and then we'll take...
Okay, do it later?
Yeah.
Thanks. So the next page is Page 1A, which is sort of a, the adjustments explained. So if you go through each, it just follows along at, at Page 1 and it explains what the increases are and why. The only thing of note that I wanted to bring up was that miscellaneous expenses, the, um, the total expenses, that 1,023 for operating and maintenance was based on the budget. And that's how the, the approved budget by the city. And so that's what we included in this. But it actually was, um, in a clerical era, like, put in as $10,000 less than, than the approved budget. So the, the department is actually not asking for the full coverage of their operating maintenance costs. They're, they're actually a little bit behind in, in that. There, so you can see that's that miscellaneous $10,000 and a loss from the prior test year. The next page is the operating statement, which, which basically is a contrast between revenue and expenses. And, let's see, what do I want to say about this? Yep, right. So you can see, I guess in the adjustment column, that, um, that expenses have gone up about $260,000 and revenues are needed to go up about $267,000 in order to, um, to make it viable for, for the system. The bottom line shows that they've been losing money in the last, for the last two actual years. And even though they seem to make up in, um, I think it probably is the revenues in 2021, and I was talking to Lisa about it, we, we, it seems to be that because they had, uh, because the city has had such, um, poor tourism due to COVID in the last couple of years and apparently record tourism in 2021, that, that sort of has helped bump up the, the amount of revenues for water usage. And, um, so, uh, still in all, because the, the expenses have gone up so much, the ability for the department to continue with the same rate structure is not, it's not able to sustain, sustain itself. And it can no longer meet its upcoming needs for expenses. Basically, that net income number is, um, that, that contingency amount, the 75,000. And the last page is operating revenues, which sort of breaks down where all the revenues are coming from. The metered sales, again, I think a lot of the fluctuations due to COVID, um, losing, losing the ability to use the school for a couple of years and all of a sudden, um, it's back on, has caused a change from 2021 in public authorities. The tourism and, um, commercial use has gone up because of a, um, a system or a company that's using a lot more use, and has a lot more usage and is increasing the revenues between 2019 and 20. So ultimately, um, we're looking at a 19.4% for all these metered customers to increase rates. Public fire protection is a little bit higher. It's 27.5%. And that is because it is based on a calculation that is required by the Public Utilities Commission under Chapter 690 of the Public Utility Rules. And that allows that a town pay no more than 30% of that revenue requirement, the 1,005, in the form of public fire protection. When I did the calculation, it actually came out to over 50%, but it is capped at that 30%, so that is, that is the charge. So for every dollar that, um, of revenue, 70 cents comes from the ratepayers and 30 cents comes from the taxpayers. And the reason, the reason why it's 30% is, um, because to, to allow for public fire protection, a water utility has to be two to three times larger than if it was just providing drinking water alone. The system has to be sized to meet water demand. And, um, fire protection provided by a local water utility helps safeguard, it's a necessary thing, it helps safeguard the buildings that all taxpayers use. And I can, we can talk more about that if anybody has any questions. So the department's been working really hard to maintain and operate the system and continue to provide safe drinking water to all its customers. And this is something that's getting harder and harder for the department as well as all the districts and other departments around the state. It's, it's just becoming unsustainable. I, I usually end up by talking about what the increase means in dollars to the ratepayers, but I understand that Lisa has already done that and shared that with the council and I didn't know she wanted to go, um, talk about that at this point.
Sure, thanks Kathy. Um, you can jump in if I go astray. So, so councilors, if you look at your council memo packet that I put together, you'll notice a couple of different things in here that I wanted to point out. Um, if you go to, let's see, it'd be the second or third page. I'm not sure exactly how it came out. But there's an example current bill and then an example increase of a current bill. Um, I wanted to increase a water and sewer, or I wanted to show you what a water and sewer bill looks like because not everybody on the council maybe gets a water and sewer bill. I also wanted to point out to council as well as the public to notice that both water and sewer are included on that bill. We are only requesting to increase the water portion of that bill, not the sewer portion of that bill. So it's not an increase of your entire bill, 19.4%, it's an increase of the water portion only of your bill, 19.4%. So for example, current bill, um, the minimum rate, or minimum usage charge for water is $60.50. We are asking to increase it to what would be $72.24, which is an $11.74 increase per quarter, that's every three months, or for a total of $46.96 per year. That is for your minimum usage for your residential customers. Now, our average customer uses about 1,800 cubic feet of water per year. And based on that usage, the increase would be about $19.58 a quarter or $78.32 a year.
So at this point, I can open it up for questions?
Yeah, are you ready for our public comments? Sure. Sure.
We do that, so, um, it's a public hearing. So if you would like to ask a question or make a comment, you may do so. Same procedures as earlier. Um, just please step up to the podium.
Hi there, Cara Armano, property owner, Sixth State Street. I'm just wondering what the commercial increase rate will be? And maybe I missed it, it may have already been quoted, but I may have missed it. Thank you.
Uh, the commercial rate is the same as, all the metered increased rates are the same. They are the 19.4%. So residential, commercial, industrial, and public authority are all increasing by 19.4%. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else have questions, comments?
It was brought up about the, the price of the repair to the dam. We talked about that the other day in the finance. I, I didn't know that was a fixed price yet. I thought that was still an evaluation.
It's not.
Oh, okay. All right.
The rate, what's included in that rates study does not, is not the repair that we're currently getting engineering.
Okay, that's, I just, because that's just a guess then, that repair, that she would talk about.
We're not to the point of repairing the dam at this point. We, what she included is the $175,000 we put in the bond three, almost four years ago now. Or ban at that point, I guess. Um, and we have used that money thus far for engineering. It has not been used for repairs yet.
Maybe just to clarify so that people that aren't aware of this. So, any repairs for that? One of the things that I understood, manage a motion, you can clarify if I'm incorrect, that one of the things that we'll look for is some other types of funding um, to pay for that that may not then impact ratepayers or, or taxpayers. Is that, that's, that's the goal?
Yeah, most definitely. I mean, we're, we're still in the engineering stage, so we don't have, we don't know yet what the cost is going to be for the repairs to the dam. Uh, but certainly, once that is completed and we have accurate figures, we will pursue every avenue to find alternative funding sources for that expense.
And one of the things she mentioned, and you'll note, is that the water department can only, um, adjust this rate based on the dollars they know they are spending and have right now. So we can't forecast that that's gonna cost us a million dollars and put, start building up money now unless we had that specific capital improvement account, which at this point, we have not added into our program. So once we know that dollar amount, we need funding and then we'll go into debt service and it could mean a rate later on down though.
Counselor's questions? Counselor's time?
Uh, I see a, a lot of the adjustment going toward materials and supplies. And more specifically, it looks like meter upgrades, asphalt repairs, um, and other upgrades to the system, other capital improvements, basically. Is there a sense of how often massive repairs or replacements like that need to happen or have happened in the past?
Uh, there, and I can't speak totally for the past, but I can tell you in the future, there's going to be more of them. Anybody who's seen the amount of water breaks, water main breaks we've had in the last few years is indicative of an aging system that needs replacement. We're in the process right now of, um, engineering also the Suri Road replacement project, which would replace Suri Road, Mountview, Hillside. I always forget the third one. Westwood. Um, so we're looking at that. Um, we're still, we got money, free money from, um, the main drinking water program to start that engineering process. Once that's done, we will go to the drinking water program to hopefully work on that large project for replacement. But yes, there, there will be consistently, um, projects and material costs for foreseeable future.
So these are long-term fixes for a, a small portion of the entire fix that's needed in the, in the water system here?
Yeah, I mean, what you're looking at is I, we just finished a small portion of our main replacement on Birch Avenue, which is what you would be seeing in this fiscal year's budget. Um, that was small in comparison to some of the larger projects that we will need to take on in the future. But we will still need to do minor repairs of, of valves and curb boxes and, and other things throughout the year.
And I just would add to that, that the pro forma of expenses such as those is meant to be sort of what, what the department thinks that they're gonna spend annually for the next few years.
And just to clarify, as far as, this is a PUC process, so as a council, there's no action that we take, um, from this, it's following the PUC process? Or is there something that we...
Nope, you have to do a motion to approve this process. And then, once you guys, correct me again if I'm wrong ladies, um, once you guys approve, then it goes into the PUC. We, Glenn signs, um, a piece of paper, then it goes to the PUC. And then the process of potential petitions and reviews and that stuff begins after we sign that paperwork.
Correct.
So we do need...
So we're approving the process and then...
Yeah, so, yeah, you need to approve the, the amount, the percentages.
Any other comments before I close the public hearing? Alright, then I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Councillors?
Move to approve the Ellsworth Water Department's water rate increase per the attached documents to be effective January 1st, 2023.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you councillors and thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item 13, council order number 112101, request of the facilities director to award a cleaning contract for city property.
I will be standing in for the facilities director because he is currently on vacation. So just for a little history, about a year ago-ish, our individual who worked under our facilities director moved on to another opportunity within our city. At that time, our current facilities director, he had a experience and focus on cleaning, and so he was able to maintain throughout the building the cleaning that was required while we were contemplating on what were the appropriate next steps for the filling of that position. We talked about the opportunity to pursue a cleaning contract for this facility specifically, which was the primary focus of that individual in addition to some small maintenance type of work that he would have done outside of his cleaning responsibilities. Our facilities director retired a couple of months ago now, we went through the process and hired a new facilities director. That individual's focus, he has a strong history in contractor work. Since he's joined the city, he's provided the city significant cost savings in several contracting projects that he's completed for the city, one being a new roof out on our radio tower facility out on the Bangla Road, excuse me, another project being new porches and steps down at the Arkey Building, both of which were done for the cost of the materials and his time and labor as opposed to contracting those out, which we saw significant savings in both projects. In addition to that, he's done many things throughout City Hall as far as some painting projects and some repairs that were long overdue. So again, he has a focus on contracting type of work and repairs as opposed to cleaning. In the absence of a true cleaning, several City Hall employees have stepped up and have actually done cleaning after hours, which they've done a tremendous job with, and I thank them, each and every one of them, for their participation and willingness to do that. But in the meantime, we pursued the concept of exploring what it would cost to have a cleaning service come in and clean City Hall. And the idea was to see, well, what's more cost-effective? You know, is it more cost-effective to have an employee whose sole responsibility and focus is on cleaning this facility, or would it be more cost-effective to have a cleaning service come in and do that for us? So we sought out, he received back three separate quotes and, which you have, all three of them in your packets, and he's recommending that we go with the low bid for the cleaning of this facility, which is Central Main Cleaning, Inc., and the contract would be for three times per week, so they would come in on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays and clean the facilities. And obviously, some supplemental cleaning may need to be done by the facilities director, but the focus on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday would be for the cleaning company to come in after hours and clean this facility, with the exception of the fire department. And that cost for the contract is $1,525 per month, which equates to $18,300 for the year. Now, if you equate that to a, the cost of an employee at roughly 40-ish thousand salary plus benefits for that individual, I think you would all agree that it's a pretty significant cost savings to go this route with a cleaning service. This is a three-year contract, but we do have the ability to get out of the contract with 30 days written notice for any reason. So if for some reason we were unhappy with the service that's being provided, we weren't satisfied with that the building was receiving the level of cleanliness that we expect and that we expect for our citizens who come in, do business here, then we could certainly opt out of the contract and decide to go in a different route. But it's my belief that this is a cost savings measure that will allow the building to receive the attention it needs and provide our facilities supervisor with the opportunity to continue to cost save for the city focusing on repairs and other maintenance projects instead of cleaning. Any questions?
Yes.
So the facilities director is doing more of this contracting type work, do you have a, like an amount that he has cost saved and is it $18,000 a year? Does that question make sense?
I don't, I don't have, I mean, I don't have an exact amount of the projects, we could easily get that, figure what the estimate was and what the true cost of the projects was, the two major projects that he's done since he came on board in six weeks ago, maybe? Yeah. So, I mean, I could certainly provide that for you, but it's, it's different in the sense that the 18,000, that's the salary of the employee that worked under the facilities director.
I see, it wasn't the facilities director.
It's not his, right, so, right, so it's apples and oranges.
It's someone who used to do that job, who isn't, okay.
Correct. We haven't replaced him, he left again about a year ago, and we've kind of, you know, been supplemental cleaning again with other city staff, and so this 18,000 would be in place of his 40-ish thousand salary plus benefits that he was receiving, not the facilities director.
And that was that person's only job?
Correct. Yeah, his primary focus was cleaning. He did, again, he would do some occasional small maintenance projects, like maybe some painting, and I think was the extent of what he did outside of cleaning, so his primary focus was cleaning.
And this bid is just for this building, not any of the other buildings?
Correct, it's just this facility.
This bid is for up to three years, or three years, meaning if we approve this motion, we're approving three years' worth of pay for the service, or?
Right, this is a three-year contract, but again, with the clause in the contract that we can opt out of the contract for any reason with 30 days written notice to the company.
It looks like just a $90 or so increase between each year?
Correct, yeah, so the second year of the contract, it goes up to 1,605 per month, which is 19,260, and the third year of the contract would be 1,695, which is $20,000, excuse me, $340 for the year.
What are they going to be doing on Tuesdays and Thursdays, are you still going to be continuing with the staff helping? Or do you think they'll have enough?
I think it'll be adequate, the facilities director will probably need to go through an empty trash at the end of the day, and mostly, and not because it's going to be overflowing, but mostly if there's food, you know, that sort of thing to keep from smelling up different work areas, but outside of that, I think the cleaning will be accomplished in those three days, with, winter time is a little bit rougher because there's a lot of salt tracked in and that sort of thing, so there's, again, there will be periodic, you know, spot mopping and vacuuming and so forth that the facilities director will do, but the primary focus will be, cleaning will be done in those three days.
Did we send out an RFP to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples?
We did not, we reached out to multiple, like I said, multiple different cleaning services and had them come in, and the ones that responded came in toward the facility and then provided us quotes.
Councillor O'Halloran, do you?
Yeah, you said the gentleman that was doing the cleaning left about a year ago, was that Steve?
No. James worked below Steve, and he took an opportunity in our wastewater treatment plan.
Right, but Steve left recently.
Right, he retired two months ago.
Most of the cleaning.
Correct.
And I'd just like to say that he was doing a fantastic job from the outside looking in, that guy seemed to really do a nice job.
So I think it's, it's certainly from a perspective of, when we think about cost savings, it's an opportunity to look at that, to achieve that, and it's something that we can opt out of, so if it isn't working, you can make that decision and rethink it without being obligated to a long-term, so I don't see a downside in terms of this approach. You're not replacing that position that's been vacant, there's a need for something, and it gives an opportunity to do it in a cost-effectively. Councillor O'Halloran?
I'm just going to do a motion. Move to contract with Central Main Cleaners for up to three years with the ability to cancel as per contract with 30 days written notice. Contract fees will be funded from 600-52035, the building maintenance account.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 14, council order number 112102, request of the public works director to award a bid for a highway plow truck.
Good evening councillors again, Lisa Cyclich, public works director. On Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, the City of Ellsworth held a bid opening for a new 2023 two-and-a-half to two-and-a-half ton, four-wheel-drive plow truck for the city's public works department. Four vendors responded to the bid and attached, you'll find the bid comparison sheets. Our low bid was for an International with Viking gear from Dagel and Houghton, but we are requesting the council approve the bid from Caldwell Diesel for an International Navistar with Viking gear because upon review of the submitted bids, it was found that for the additional approximately $2,000 between the Caldwell bill and, or Caldwell bid and the Dagel and Houghton build, that Caldwell included a larger transmission, which is better for towing operations, and they are planning to have the truck sent out to a vendor to have it rust-proof undercoating, and that was part of our spec to require factory undercoating, but the specific model doesn't come with it, and so Caldwell said that they would send it out and have it done by an outside vendor.
So I have a question, and I have no understanding in terms of this, so this is why I'm asking it. So it's, it's replacing a 2013 International Workstar model truck that has 33,000 miles on it. So one question I have is, what is the general average mileage that is put on these trucks that end of useful life, for lack of a better term? And then the, you note that over the last three and a half years, it's had $46,000 worth of repairs done to it. How typical is that? Was this just a lemon that we have?
So this, these couple of years, and Adam can speak to this more if I get it wrong, there is a few years, these Workstar models, International put our lemons, they had three or four years, I think, where they were just, all of them are lemons, which is why we've spent the $46,000, and it's still a lemon. It's still got problems. We will be getting rid of something that we probably don't want to have anyway. Generally speaking, 33.5 is the low end of the mileage. Part of the reason this one is a low end of the mileage is because on top of it being the Workstar model, which has been plagued with issues, the type of dump body that was used on this particular model is not something that we can dig out of in the summertime, it's a, basically a wintertime-only use plow truck, so it sits most of the summertime, which is why it has lower mileage than most of our other trucks.
Are there other International Workstars in the fleet that we need to be?
There is one more, one more after this one.
Any sense of how much longer that one?
That one will be right back here next year.
Sense of follow-up to that, so after that purchase, are we looking as a city?
We're in a pretty good shape.
For some years to come?
After the next, this plow truck and next year's plow truck, we're in pretty good shape. I mean, we'll still have to stay on a rotation, but as far as spending 30, 40,000 the year before we get rid of it, we're hoping to get out of that rotation that we've been in.
Councillor?
So you have a rotation for all your vehicles, right, that you know, which is, so are, because this one's newer, are you putting another one off for a year, or?
Nope. They're on a like a 10-year rotation, an eight to 10-year rotation is what we're doing. So there was, there was a gap in time, last year, the truck we got rid of last year was a 2010, so apparently between 2010 and 2013, there was a couple of years that you guys didn't buy trucks, so this one now becomes the next one in line to be replaced. Right, which is essentially 10 years by the time we get it.
Other questions?
Is there any sense of how much, sorry, how much, because it's going to go to an online bid, how much do those usually go for?
So the online bid part is to sell our existing truck, because, so there's multiple reasons we did, sometimes we include, or usually we include it as a trade-in on a different, bigger truck, but the size that we're asking for right now is a size truck that a International dealer could bid on as well as like a Dodge or Ford or Chevy, it's kind of a mid-size truck, and so to keep everything in equal playing field, we didn't include the turn-in because the Ford Dodge dealerships wouldn't be looking to purchase our single axle plow trucks, so we left it out. But on an online bid system for this kind of truck, it's, because it's a Workstar, it may have not as much as a normal plow truck, but with the fact that plow trucks are, like a lot of other vehicles, six months to a year plus out, you know, if we put it out to bid this winter and somebody's in need of one, we may get a pretty good return on it. I'm guessing, guessing eight to 10? What? Oh yeah, sorry, next winter, because we won't get our, yeah, sorry, next winter, once we have the new one, we will put this one out to bid. Yeah, we're not putting it out to bid before we have the replacement.
Makes sense.
Sorry.
Councillor O'Halloran?
Just a couple of comments. One, thank you for the wonderful roads, sets up it on the council, I've had several area people from outside of town saying that Ellsworth roads are always better than the surrounding towns. Two, thank you for making a plan not to sit on assets, you're going to buy an asset, you're going to sell an asset, I like that. Storing them in the backyard to spend money on them after they're sitting doesn't make any sense, I like the plan of buying an asset and purging an asset, so thank you for including both in this package.
I'll make a motion, but my computer died, so I'll have to go over to George. Move to approve the request of the public works director to award the bid for a new 2023 plow truck and associated gearing to Caldwell Diesel for $139,832 to be paid for through the Highway Department Equipment Capital Account, 909090059004, and allow for the sale of the 2013 International Workstar. and allow for the sale of the two thousand thirteen International WorkStar plow truck via online bidding process.
Second.
We have motion and seconds.
Could we check that price that you said? Was that correct?
What's she read, Ms.?
One hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two?
Yep.
Sounds great.
I believe so, yes.
A motion and second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you all.
Item fifteen, discuss ways to improve the notification of meeting agenda items to the public and make the process more cost-effective. So this is an item that I asked to put on the agenda based on, we heard some of the comments earlier this evening, but it's something that has come up in terms of just the feeling that information is not getting out to the public. And we spend a considerable amount, I forget the dollar amount, Tony, but we spend a considerable amount of money publishing notices. And if that's not working, if that's not the right avenue, if there are other ideas, maybe we do that plus, then I just thought it was worth having a discussion to see if there were anything else that we could do. I do think that at the end of the day, it comes down to, there are going to be things that, information that's just, if people aren't invested in looking at the announcements, then they're not going to get it until after decisions have been made. But with that said, we can always improve processes. So I just wanted to put it on here as a discussion. If we're spending the kind of dollars that we're spending and people are still feeling like they're not getting the information, what else can we do and can we get better return and use those dollars more effectively to get information out to the public? Councilor Hanson?
Well, I read that agenda item and I looked at our, the Ellsworth City Facebook page, specifically about the question about the Police Department lease. So I just looked at all of the posts from September, October, and I didn't see any post on there about any meetings that were specifically about the Police Department. So I thought that would be, it's free for us to put anything on Facebook. And I think a lot of people use it. I will add that I don't use it, except that I went on to look for this thing, so I wouldn't want to stop having things in the newspaper for those of us who like to avoid social media.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting, don't hear, I'm not suggesting that we eliminate posting in the paper. It was just, it's, we're spending a lot there, but it seems like we're not getting the return. So it's not to replace it, it's just to have a discussion about, are there other things that we could be doing to improve communication?
Like, local radio station, is that something that would be doable or does that just cost?
I don't know what the, I mean, what the costs are.
There are a number of free avenues. I know small businesses like to use free advertising avenues when possible. W E R U Community Radio, for example, they have a community calendar that's free to anybody to use it. A number of other newspapers in the area might as well.
Do we post the agenda on the cable station? Do we?
That would be an IT question.
It'll be.
Yeah.
Where do we currently, I mean, it's in the paper, it's on the Facebook page.
The city website.
City website. And there's so many people that don't get it. It's like he's listening.
I heard my name. So right now, when we get the agenda, we post it to the city's website. And we do post it to Facebook, but we post it as an event. So once the event goes by, you won't see it there going back. So we post it as an event because that way people can say if they're attending or not attending or, you know, that way they can, if they say they're attending, it'll remind them in their own events that they're gonna be attending. So we, so those are what we do right now technology-wise. We don't post it to the TV station because it's hard to post an agenda in that format. In like a slide, you know, like a slideshow on the TV. We could, but it's a hard way to post the agenda. We have a slide on there that says when the meetings are going to be regularly scheduled, but not the specific agenda for each meeting.
Could we have Nick from the Grand do a presentation of the agenda and post that on the?
We certainly could ask.
What's it told about? You said there's a lot of money we spend to this. What is that amount of money?
Fifteen? Fifteen?
Fifteen thousand per year? That's nothing.
Fifteen or fifty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
That's nothing.
That's mostly for newspaper?
That's for newspaper advertising.
That's for newspaper.
What about just an email list? Like city citizens could sign up for an email that's free.
That exists. If you go to our website, there is an email list you can sign up for when an agenda gets posted, it will send you an email that this minute has been posted.
Maybe people don't know about that, maybe just a letter with tax, tax bills or something that's already going out in the mail. Might not cost that much.
I have that email and I'm about as computer illiterate as they get, so, but I knew about it and I don't know. I think it's.
I have just a couple of questions. Is there, is there better positioning that could be happening in the paid advertisement? Is there, I feel like there's an assumption that because we know it, everyone knows it. And that's not the case. And we're not reaching the target market, obviously. Is the positioning an option of where it's advertised, is it legal notices, is it not? Could there be a position change for a little bit more money in the paper for the people that are non-computer savvy, if you will? What does it cost to put a flyer in the Ellsworth American with the full, the two-page agenda? What does it cost to do an insert? What do you call those inserts? I'm not saying that's the answer, I'm saying that's the question.
Yeah, I think that's what the discussion is about, is just brainstorming. We've heard it, it's not a, it's not one over another, it's what are the ideas? Councilor Hanson, then. Councilor Stein?
We could probably do a better job in this meeting, having committees reporting back. Like there was that Public Safety Committee, right, that met and kind of moved forward this, and it didn't get announced at any city council meetings. And maybe, I think maybe there are more people who listen to this meeting once a month who don't necessarily pay attention to workshops in the in-between? Or committee meetings or whatever.
Councilor Stein?
Yeah, so even though it's, you know, I believe it's the council's responsibility to get the information out there, I don't think the city has been doing a great job of it, but there are a number of organizations in the city that are much better, just really good at it. I think we should look into leveraging the work that they do, potentially appropriations, you know, upping the budget from fifteen thousand, adding a couple thousand more onto it to reach out to, say, the Chamber, Frenchman Bay Conservancy, Heart of Ellsworth. People that, organizations that are really good at reaching abroad, swap the people. And who have mailing lists and are probably better at social media than, you know, some of us are here in the council. Plus feasibility studies, organizations that we could ask to actually look into how people get their information through a survey of citizens. How do you receive your information with the city? How would you like to? That way we have some information coming in, we can use it to make better decisions.
Councilor Allen?
So I always wanted to have like a couple of marquees within the city. Like, because it's so big, you'd need a couple of them, just, and it couldn't have the council agenda because it'd be scrolling. But just as a reminder of upcoming events, like here's a council meeting that's gonna be this Monday night, or we're just seeing your dogs, or just to devote, those sorts of things. But that comes with a big price tag for those marquees. So, but I think if we're gonna look at the capital of planning, if we're trying to look at ways to get this information out, that maybe that would be an opportunity for us. As well as, do we spot, like, boost any of our notifications on Facebook?
Typically only very special events or job, department-level, department head-level job advertisements. We'll sometimes boost, you know, the Winter Carnival, things like that, the bigger events, yeah.
So maybe, how much is that, like, we spend, what, twenty-five dollars?
It depends on, it depends, and the more you spend, the more reach you get. So we're typically spending around a hundred dollars is where we'll target those.
So if we did a hundred dollars a month for a meeting, that might be helpful as well. So it's pretty minimal.
It would definitely, it would definitely get it out there more, for sure.
The benefit there is you get some insight into who's actually clicking, who's looking, you can tell if it's working.
Is this public comment or is this just council?
If you want comment on an agenda, it'd be a problem.
You guys don't want beer in your state?
Yeah.
I just like, John Linderhand, I'd just like to make a general comment on advertising. If you want to promote something and get it out there, if you just put your everyday run-of-the-mill agenda out there, nobody's gonna look at it because it's every day stuff, boring, 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 no one cares. But if you've got something controversial maybe coming up, or if you're gonna spend four million dollars on a police station, that's when you want to have a hook out there that people know it's out there. And spell it right out, what it's gonna be. Hey, we're gonna discuss a potential four million dollar purchase of this right here. If you're interested, you need to put it out there. Every advertising successful has a hook. And I think when you come to specialty stuff like that, is when you really need to put it out there. I think our budget we're spending on advertising is peanuts. And just like when you're talking to three, four million dollar project like we're talking about for the Police Department or the Fire Department expansion, that's what you need to put out there. Say, if you're public, you're really interested in your tax dollars, spell it right out there, spend the extra money and put the hook out there so people pay attention to it. That's my opinion anyway, whether you're selling a product or whether you're getting, you want to get a crowd here, you want to tell them what's going on so they know. Hey, we're gonna, you know, just as an example. And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but I'm just saying that's fresh in everybody's mind right there. To me, the agenda, and the agenda thirteen on that council meeting, I didn't know it was gonna be a lease or didn't know what it was gonna be, didn't know it was gonna be a three million dollar thing. Put some dollars out there and you get people's attention on it. It affects everybody's wallet out there. So just my thoughts like that.
So, Councilor Stein, I think your idea in terms of getting some information of having discussions about how people get information is important because we could have a budget of a million dollars and still, I mean, I don't know how many flyers and cards I get in the mail that instantly it just sweep, I sweep them right into the circular file. So it's one of those things of understanding, I think that's a good point in terms of where are people getting their information? And we know Facebook, there's certainly plenty of comments. So if we could tap into that to get information out and use social media and some of the organizations in the community, that might be the best way for us to increase awareness.
I think too that we, I mean, getting the information out there is definitely important, but we need to get the information out there where people could get their information. So on the Facebook, I mean, don't just say there's a council agenda. You say, hey, if you want to know what's going on with the agenda. And you can do that through the slides and you can do that on marquees. Just quick things of saying, agenda coming, look here for the items on there. Or if there is something special, you can say, this is going to be on the agenda. And I think, short and sweet, because I can tell you, I'm the same as you. I get stuff in the mail that goes right in the garbage. And if it's long, I'm not gonna read it. So put out the snippets and let the people know where they're, where and how they're gonna be able to get the information that they need. And I do agree on the Ellsworth American because that agenda is in legal notices and the classified ads. I don't know when the last time you were looking at classified ads, but I haven't looked at those in years. So, I mean, let's just have a block somewhere in the Ellsworth American, absolutely. Right, and my eyes are too old for that.
I don't typically comment on public comment, so I don't want to forget what I'm about to say, so I'm gonna say nah. We talk about social media, but you always say Facebook. But there's a lot more social media out there. Twitter, TikTok, Instagram, they're all platforms that can be used and they're all free.
If you're fifteen.
Okay, so before I forgot that fleeting idea that was in my head.
Thank you, Michael.
I just do want to say that, you know, all of these are great ideas and we can certainly drill down on some, you know, some focal points. But, you know, it's important to realize there's no one in this city that's dedicated to this type of work. We don't have a PIO, we don't have a Public Information Officer. This is dueled out by department heads when they have particular items of interest. Our IT department, which is extremely busy maintaining all of the IT needs throughout the entire city. And, you know, the responsibility of posting things on social media, on the website and everything, falls to them by default. So there's no one focused person whose, you know, daily activity is around how do we get this information out? How do we provide this? Because there's a lot of business that needs to be done in this city. And everybody all has, you know, multiple hats that they're wearing and roles that they're playing and jobs that they're doing. And this sort of activity is just kind of a secondary response that everyone has to try and get the information out to the community. So although, you know, it's been identified as something we need to work on, we can certainly do that as a staff as we identify some options. But I just want to put that out there, that what's been done is being done by numerous people as just a subsidiary of what their true responsibilities are here in the building, so.
I think that's valid. I would extend it, I think the point about Councilor Hanson that you made around our responsibility as well in terms of, as we identify issues in different committees or discussions, of also raising that up and making sure that we're having discussions to say, boy, we think this should be pushed up somewhere else or at some, in a different way and having discussions about that. So that's not just, it's not just city staff. And, you know, we may not agree in terms of how well things, information has flowed out before, but I think everybody would be in agreement that to talk about it, to try to improve it, is, we're on the same page. I don't think anybody disagrees with the idea of, let's do a better job. Let's not, just because we have this perspective and somebody has this perspective, we shouldn't hunker down and say, well, there's no opportunity, let's just keep it the same. So it's an opportunity for us ongoing and I hope that the community weighs in on it. If you have ideas, by all means, send them in, email the council so that we can just try to chip away at it and do a better job. But I think it's a collective responsibility. And I hope also, from a community perspective, this is, this is in our city. This is everybody's city. And if we're all involved in the process, the more people that get engaged and see something and then passes it on and shares that information, the better off we're going to be. So I think it's just creating a collective responsibility of saying, let's get more information out so that people know what's going on and they can participate or choose to participate any way that they choose, but they have the information available to them.
Jim Peninga, look, I think this oftentimes, if we're, being on that council before, we're often restricted to the terms of the charter. And the charter will dictate to us how we advertise, public notices and things like this. And I think a good place to start, and because I understand that, now we're the young and you're the old. A good place to start is when we review the charter. And it's my understanding that there are, that that's out there, that we want to look at the charter again. And in that section about ordinances and public notification and that sort of thing, it should be reviewed there. Which would be an excellent place to start. And then if you come up with some other ideas, that's great too. But I think that oftentimes we are restricted with what's within the charter and we jump on that, but we've fulfilled our obligation, that's all we have to do. but we've fulfilled our obligation, that's all we have to do. And a lot of people don't read it, you got to find out where it is. One place, I know you just put a form right there, and every time I pay my excise tax, it could be a form sitting there, a notification. You just grab my, no, there's no, there's no labor involved, you just take the sheet and read it. But there, there are ways to improve the, the notification to people, but going to the charter is a good place.
I'd be curious to know how many people are watching this meeting right now, because personally, it should be eighty-five hundred people in this city, and it's probably about two hundred. And that's pretty sad.
Some people watch it later, they don't necessarily watch it live.
Yeah, just, so.
I mean, if you're interested, watch it.
Since people are watching.
Forty.
Forty.
Forty people. That's sad.
I was going to send you to the podium, for the forty people that, all right, you know.
Forty people, so go ahead and work, we can see Elsworth. I know that, I brought this up the other day in the finance meeting, but I was coming down Boxport Road, and that sign that's out in front of that physical therapy place, that caught my eye just like that. And, and every time I go out there, it catches my eye. It's a beautiful sign, LED lit up, he's got notices on there. I don't know why you can't put one right out there, right next to State Street. It can just have the main item on the agenda, or main announcement, doesn't have to have the whole thing rolling. You know what I mean? And, I mean, churches have them, businesses have them, schools have them, schools got one, has notice on there. I think that would be an excellent place, because you're going right up and down State Street, everyone does. Just throwing that out there.
I like Holden's, they got one right up there, but somebody donated every penny for that one. Nobody had to come up with a dollar, except for the person that donated anonymously, so. We'll take donations, go ahead.
Well, well, I was gonna, no, I was gonna say, if I was elected, I stated that I was going to put a sign. If you didn't do it out here, I was going to put it on my, front of my house on the lawn, so. Next time people vote for me in, and I'll put a sign out on my house.
Now you're promising signs?
What about your pickup?
This was really nothing, I don't think, for action, it was more for discussion, and, and I think we can just, I think we should continue to think about it, but I just wanted to raise it for, for that purpose. And we will explore, we'll certainly look at what it'll cost to move our notices that are in the Ellsworth American, and, and we have a, we have a communications committee in City Hall that kind of went defunct after COVID, or during COVID, but we can certainly bring that group back together, and they were mainly focused on internal communications, but that would be a strong group to explore additional opportunities for external communication as well.
We did start the, that newsletter.
Yep, which we still do.
That was like quarterly, which is great.
All right. Item sixteen, discussion in action to enforce the city's odor ordinance against Maine Organics in the city industrial park. Council Halloran, I believe that you sponsored this?
I did, if you're looking for.
Yes, to.
A few words.
Peter.
First of all, I was elected to this council in November of twenty-one, and shortly after being elected, I started getting bombarded with complaints about the smell on one eighty near the solar farm that was a result of Maine Organics. And shortly after I was elected, I brought it to the council and said, look, I'm not interested in, in anything but resolving this. I, I want to give this man a chance to get things straightened out, I'm not asking that the world comes down on him, but I'd like to see an end plan here and an end game. And it seems like nothing has gotten done about the problem we talked about. I'm not saying people haven't worked on it, I'm not saying that there hasn't been efforts of the city and the contractor and everyone trying to work together. I know one time Glenn said, I think, one of the most positive things that's come out of it is, they're communicating now. I was critical about dumping our city sludge up there, because I thought we were contributing to the problem. State, I, understanding says that's not allowed anymore, so that we're not dumping our city sewage there any longer. However, the problem still exists, the bird problem still exists. We're no further ahead than we were a year ago when we brought this up. I can say that the people in that industrial park have dealt with it for six years. I've only heard about it for one year, because I've only been on the council for one year. But it seems that in that one year, we still have a severe odor problem. And I sponsored that to see if there's some way that we can come to grips with this and enforce the ordinance of our odor ordinance here in the city of Ellsworth.
I'm Lori Roberts with the Code Enforcement Office. Back in January, we visited with the city attorney, who suggested that we not follow and go through the city ordinance for any sort of fines or anything like that. We were to ask that they were to abide by the operations manual that was approved by the planning board. This is a state licensed facility, I can't stop their license. We went through a whole procedure of how to report odors, and it would go through the facility itself, and then that is also reported to the state. I do go by once a week and have, since we've been discussing this last January. There have been more times than not, the times that I have gone out there, there have been no birds or odor for a very long time. I went out today, there was no odor, there was no birds. So I, I, certainly I don't live there, I'm not there all the time. There were things that they were trying with the falcons, there was at one time when I, there was no birds, there was an eagle nested there. I didn't know that eagles attack seagulls, I mean, I don't, I don't know the food chain that well, but that's apparently what happens, is they're too scared to be there because of the eagle. And I guess the eagle had moved, and then the cannon was tried, and that didn't seem to work as well. And so I, I would, I was also speaking with the town attorney that we'd like to give them a sixty-day time period to come up with a plan and start enforcing that plan. And Josh and I have spoken, and we, there is an odor ordinance, it's a very small ordinance in the city's Unified Development Ordinance, that we can go by, but it is constant, all I can do is charge fees, fines. That's all I can do, I can't stop this facility from running.
I'm not asking anyone to stop the facility from running. I'm asking to stop the odor at the property line. If he wants his property to smell, let him smell it. But it's not fair to everybody else, and it's been a year, it's just not fair.
Josh Wellman, Maine Organics. We haven't had a complaint since July twenty-second, so if I don't have a complaint, I can't fix the problem. I'm not always there, I have people running it. So we just started getting a complaint, we got one from Lori the fourteenth of November. So we are in action to fix things, we, we've had some problems with the rain, it's made a lot of juice at the compost site. We need, we just started bringing in some new carbon source, some shavings, sawdust from Pleasant River Lumber, that's going to be used to absorb it, we're going to bring in some ash, wood ash to neutralize it as a liming agent. The reason for the birds increased, because the birds were gone, from time to time, the birds have started to increase, because we have got an influx of shavings from the Jacksonland. So we have been hauling those off, we started as soon as she called, or I got the email. But that has been, I have not had any complaints emailed to me or called to me since the twenty-second of July. And the last one was the fourteenth of November, so we're on it, and we're fixing it. And I agree with Lori's plan, give us sixty days, and we'll get it straightened out, and then from there, you know. It's a compost site, I'm going to say, you know, there's, there's going to be some odors. There's, there's never not going to be any odors, because the material that comes in smells. Soon as it's dumped, it's mixed, and it's covered, and there shouldn't be an odor. If there's constant odor, there's an issue, and we need to fix it.
There's constant odor, and it needs to be fixed.
I do have a question, though, if someone goes by and smells odor on one eighty, going by with their vehicle, it's not at their house, it's not at their business. When it's at their business, I agree, who wants to smell that all the time? I, I get it, totally, the wind's going that way, and we're flipping piles, and if the wind's blowing out one eighty, and we flip a pile, and the smell goes out one eighty, and someone goes by in their vehicle, there's no houses out there, there's solar panels. And someone smells it, and they call Lori, is that really a complaint? I mean, you can go by a dairy farm that smells, and you're just driving by it, it's not at your house. So I just, that comment seems to come to us often, people driving out one eighty, well, I smell it. Okay, you smell it out one eighty, that's different than being at your business or at your house. So I just want to put that comment out there, but I just want to let the council know we are working on it, and we're trying to mitigate it. I've pulled in a couple other employees there to help, because I have one person that works there full-time, so we are working on it, so.
Council Stein.
I just want to say I stopped by today for the first time.
Okay.
I met up with Arnold, who is your full-time employee?
Yeah, he is, he's the operator, yeah.
Connor was there, that's your son?
Yep, his son, yep.
I didn't smell it at all until I got there and was walking around the piles, and, yeah, I mean, it was intense, but not any more than I expected it should be being a compost facility. There were birds there, they didn't, you know, attack me or anything, there's other times. So the guys showed me around, and I noticed a few things, they were really, they knew what they were doing. You know, they, they were excited about trying new techniques to fix the problems. You know, they said over and over again, Arnold did, we, we're not trying to make smell, we're, we're doing what we can to remediate this. They were, I think, purchasing pine shavings as well.
Yeah, we just got a load in today, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, you know, an added expense to, to try to fix the problem. They tried some creative things with the birds, and are looking into other, other things as well. And, oh, I spoke with another commercial composting facility up in Blue Hill, and the owner spoke really highly of your guys you have down there. Those guys know what they're doing, they know how compost works, and that seemed apparent to me as well. So I think that's the most important thing to me, is that, you know, you guys know what they're doing, and they're willing to work with the city and try to remediate these things.
Yeah, a lot of the, you know, some of the issue is lately, is the rain. We've had a lot of rain, like I said earlier, and when the rain comes and goes through the piles, and then the juice comes out of the piles, it makes, you know, that, that's odor, because it's going down through all the lobster waste, and it's running down across the yard. And then we have like a burn put up of shavings that collects it, and that needs to be cleaned up like weekly and put back into the mix, and then a new burn put down, and then the clean shavings needs to be put down to absorb the juice. So it's just, you know, things change in the compost business, and you need to stay on top of it to mitigate the odors as much as possible, so we are working on it.
So I, just, Lori, you said this, and we're, especially since we're being asked as a council to take action, what I'm not clear of is, there seems to be two different versions of reality in terms of what's taking place. I, I kind of want to understand that, when, last time we discussed this, there was the agreement of the process that you outlined in terms of complaints would be filed, and that was working, we were copied on a number of those early on, and then they did stop, and then recently they started up again. So I, I guess I'm trying to understand where, where that difference is in terms of that it's a chronic, constant problem versus it's a periodic issue that bubbles up, and then you're saying that you're willing to, to address it, and you're taking action around that. And I just kind of want to have that sense of it, so Council Halloran, if you have some information, you said it, it stinks, it needs to be corrected, what am I missing in that, because it's two different versions?
What I'm hearing from the people in the industrial park is that they stopped reporting, because no action was being taken, and it was a waste of their time.
See, and that's, and that's where the, the confusion lies, because, so if we enforce the ordinance, as has been suggested, it's fines, we're issuing fines, we have no ability to impact the operation of that business. The only ones who can impact the operation of that business are the state, because they're the ones who licensed it. The complaints that are being filed need to be filed, because those are registered with the state. And if the state receives enough complaints, then eventually the DEP will come down on the owners and take action, and potentially could suspend or, or yank his license to operate. The city of Ellsworth doesn't have any ability to interfere with that, or, or authority to interfere with his operation and his licensing. The only thing we can do per that ordinance is to levy fines every time there's an odor, and which is not going to resolve the issue of the odor, and in my opinion, will further the, deteriorate any relationship we have with the property owner, the business owner, to be able to work with them and encourage them to try to do everything within their power to mitigate it. Which is why the city has been reluctant to go out and start levying fines, because Mr. Wellman has worked diligently with us over the last year, and code enforcement, to try and work on the birds and work on the smell. And to his point, there's, based on the business that takes place there, there's always going to be the potential for odor. And the efforts that they go into mitigating it, and the response has been immediate whenever we have received complaints about odor, that we have passed on to Mr. Wellman, and they have gone right out there and either ceased the activity, if it happens to be pile flipping, which is the significant source of the odor, or other efforts. The cannon was a big, you know, we were getting complaints about the cannon, we contacted Mr. Wellman, and that very same day, the cannon's use was discontinued. So I think levying fines is not going to solve, it's not going to solve the odor problem, and it's going to drive a wedge between the city and the business owner, who has been responsive when we have reached out and asked for him to do something about the odor complaints. But that complaint process is critical for those individuals and those businesses in that area that have this complaint, that they continue to file those complaints with the state, because in the end, the state is the only one that has the authority to impact and stop the business from operating, which ultimately would resolve the odor entirely.
I don't think anyone in this room wants any business to stop them operating. I think that we need to address the issue. I understand it's been going on for six years now, I've only been involved for a year. I don't think there's anybody in this room that wants to put the hammer into a business to stop them from operating. But it's not fair to the taxpayers in that community that are paying taxes and eroding their businesses and their cars, and from all the bird droppings on vehicles and all of these complaints that I get, and I constantly get people saying, it doesn't do any sense, there's no sense in filling out newspapers, because it doesn't change. I can tell you, for the last year, nothing's changed. That's the only thing I can speak about, there's the last year, there has been no change. I didn't track it prior to that.
Just a.
I'm just going to, a couple of comments. One, you're talking about enforcing the ordinance, right? But there's nothing that quantifies, and nothing to quantify the order in the ordinance. So I'm not sure that how you're even going to levy a fine, because, because with the DEP, if you file the complaint with the DEP, the DEP actually has equipment, although they don't have any that they run it right now, but they have equipment that can come, they can place around the site to actually measure the quantifiable odor that's coming off that site. But we don't, and our ordinance doesn't call it out. So it's a completely subjective ordinance for you to say, well, it smells all the time up there. He just said, well, I was up there, and it didn't smell at all. Lori's been up there multiple times and said. Lori's been up there multiple times and said, you know, most of the time I don't smell. I don't have any birds. So it's a completely subjective thing to the people that are there, the people that go up there. So I'm not sure how you can enforce that ordinance. And I don't have a dog in the fight because they're not composting our stuff. All our stuff's getting shipped to Canada. Okay? But there are businesses that smell. Maine shellfish smells in the summertime when you drive down Water Street. When they used to have the landfill on 95 coming up to Bangor, that was brutal. That was there for years. It's in an industrial park, which is where it's supposed to be. Where else in the city are you going to put it that is zoned for? It's zoned to be in the industrial park. It's a compost facility. And ultimately, he is 100% correct. DEP is the only one that has the power to do anything about that. But for you to be able to, like, if Lori wanted to go out there and try and enforce an ordinance, you'd have to quantify it, just like speeding. You, you can't charge somebody for speeding just by watching their car go by. You have a piece of equipment as a police officer that says, nope, 55, you're going 75. You're going to tick it. Right? It's the same thing with odor. To say that, sit there and say, oh, it smells bad all the time. We need to find the guy. And for another young man to sit there and say, well, I went up there and it didn't smell bad at all. There was no birds. So how are you going to literally try and enforce that ordinance on a business owner without any kind of quantifiable evidence? I don't think, I, I don't think you can. So ultimately, the only comments I'm making is, I don't think the ordinance is enforceable on its face because it's not quantifiable. One. Two, it's an industry that smells, but it's in the industrial park. So it's where it's supposed to be. As unfortunate as it may be, I'm sure people didn't like living next to a landfill, but some people have to. That's the way it goes. And three, we have a cooperative person here who's spent a lot of money trying to keep this from happening and completely changed his hours of operation. You have guys working on Sundays sometimes. Yeah. You have guys working on the weekends. Like, there's only so much you're going to be able to put on this guy. He's doing everything he can right now. Okay? So if you have a quantifiable odor ordinance, fine. Have at it. Otherwise, it's not an enforceable ordinance. And this, this time that we're spending back and forth about this is spinning our wheels unless the DEP is going to come down and say, hey, you smell too much. You need to do this. Because they're the ones that have the power. They're the ones that can say, Josh, you got too much stuff on your site. Move it. Josh, you're going to shut down three days a week because you smell too much. We can't do any of that. So we can sit and we can discuss all we want, but if you want to be productive, somehow the DEP is going to have to be involved in that process because our enforcement options really aren't productive.
And we want to get rid of the birds too, because the birds are destroying our property as well. So when they're there, we don't like them. So I mean, it's, it's something we don't want either at our business. So I understand what my neighbors are saying when they are there, because they do. They make a mess. I mean, I get it. So we're doing, you know, everything we can, like I said, whatever it was to do with the, the shavings, which we use and we love them, but they have a bad side too.
So you, you want to, can you go up to the?
I can speak for you just real quick. My name is Tom Clark from Ellsworth. I may, I came into this not very interested, but I got really engaged. What I didn't hear, Mr. O'Halloran, is how many times have you visited this site?
I have never visited the site.
And yet you are here.
Let me finish. I drive by the solar farm twice a day. The first five years I drove by it on my way back and forth to Ellsworth. I didn't say a word because I drove by. When I got elected, that community started at me about this smell. And I knew about the smell because I drive by it every day.
And I was neglectful at the time. I think it's been within the past month or so that I have gone by and I have had a smell. I just was logging things and I didn't reach out to him and that's my fault. Because I, I know he's not there all the time. So, you know, it's, I think, a more working relationship between the two of us and coming up with this plan within 60 days. We can bring it back to the council in 60 days with the plan and, you know, whatever you would like. But I think to find somebody that's put out so much money to try and stop what's happening.
Counselor Hall.
I'm all for your 60-day plan. It's the best thing I've heard since I've been on the council. There's a, a limit there to work this thing through. The last time we visited this, there was a working plan supposedly going to happen and it still smells. Regardless of effort, regardless of, of what's going on, it smells. People are still upset about it. There's, there's some talk about getting, applying for tax abatements because evaluations are going down so far in the community that the city put this, uh, excuse me. The city started this business community from the beginning and then moved this in. That was several years ago that, that the city started in the eighties. I'm perfectly willing to listen to a 60-day plan, a 90-day plan, something to make progress, not make talk.
Yep. Absolutely. I agree 100%.
Let me just check to see, does anybody else have comments? If you do, just please step, please go to, you need, definitely you're on the podium, so everybody listening.
Kevin Wallace, I'm the guy on the bad side of the wind blowing downhill. It's, I'm there every day. I see it every day or I wouldn't be back here again. I've done the complaints. I've done, I've filed all the things and got zero response. I, I'm at a point myself, I don't know what to do. The birds, the mess, the varmints and the damage. He mentioned it's damaging his property. It's damaging everybody else's around it. Who is bearing the responsibility for that but the property owners? Not him, who just said he's damaging it. Um, you know, I see it every day, you know? So maybe it isn't, it might be only 7:30 to 8 o'clock when the piles are turned, but I'm there every day and I see it. And I'm not seeing the results. So why should my business be damaged because of something else? I invest money in this town. I've been here a long time. I've been here 40 years. I'm looking at moving out of this town because of this. One of the issues becomes, what's the value of my property? When that smell is there, it's zero. That's not fair.
We're going to do everything we can to take care of it. And that's, that's the best I can give you. Because, you know, we don't want unhappy neighbors. That's not what we're trying to do. But when a load comes in that smells and it dumps out and the wind's blowing his way, he's going to smell it. There's nothing I can do about it. We mix it and get it mixed with carbon and cover it as fast as we can and that's the best we can do. If, if my operator's flipping a pile and the wind direction changes and blows towards Mr. Wallace, you know, it happens. But if it's, if it's short-term, I think, you know, that's reasonable. But if it's long-term, yeah, we got an issue somewhere at the compost site. I need to know about it so we can fix it, so I can tell my operator. That's the best we can do.
So I think we've had a point where, is there anybody else that wants to speak? So counsel, is there anything?
I'd just like to clarify if I could that, are we, are we hearing that there is a 60-day workable plan here that we're going to try and work with this business owner to improve the relationship and the smell with the other business owners? Is that what I'm getting?
Yes.
Yes.
Is 60 days reasonable? It's been.
If I could have 90, it would be better.
Well, in fairness, you know, I brought it up last year. It's been 10, 11 months and it smells every day that I drive by it. That doesn't bother me. What bothers me is that the businesses there are being affected by it. I don't mind. I can drive by it. That's, you never heard from me about it until I was on the council because I don't care. But when businesses are affected and I get elected to this council, I care.
I don't hear any action being recommended. So, thank you. Item 17, discussion and update on the status of securing a facilitator for the development of the comprehensive plan in consideration for forming an oversight group committee. I sponsored this item. This has come up many times several years ago. I think it was two and a half now was the first time the council appropriated funding to secure a facilitator for the process. And so through questions, I know COVID certainly had an impact on this process. There's, there's no question about that. And so just wanted to bring it back to get an update in terms of where we stand in terms of securing a facilitator so we can start the process of forming, you know, moving forward with the comprehensive plan as well as the oversight group that's a part of that process and getting a better understanding of what that looks like, what, who's part of it so we can get that established and, and really get the, the comp plan moving. So that's what we're.
So thank you, Counselor Hamilton. Yeah, so Matt is here. He's our assistant city planner. In the absence of our city planner, he has taken over the role and has done a significant amount of work towards moving the RFP process forward and is near completion and he'll explain a little bit more about that process. And then he will be heading up the, working with the planning board after, with the formation of the steering committee. And he's going to explain what that process looks like to the group. So, Matt?
Sure. So as Glenn said, I've been working on drafting the RFP for the consultant. It's, I have a working draft ready, but I have to consult with Jana and other staff who've worked on RFPs before to look it over, get their opinion. And Michelle Gagnon from Bar Harbor also offered to look it over for me. And so that should be ready by the end of the month probably, if not early December. And then in terms of the steering committee, so I don't know if you remember, I was going through old notes that Elena had put together. She had a binder of a presentation that she had done. It kind of showed the hierarchy of like the different committees involved. Or like the planning boards technically, like the client for the consultant. But above them is the council who has to adopt the comprehensive plan at completion. And then further down though, it's the steering committee who works with the consultant and helps draft the comp plan. And below that's the subcommittees that are focused on specific topic areas that are within the comp plan, help draft those specific areas. And then below that is the public comment and direct, yeah, direct comment from the public. So the steering committee will probably be about eight to 10 people. It makes sense to have two council members, two planning board members and then three to four like citizens at large from the public to be part of that. And they will meet probably about once a month. As the plan, two years down the road or a year down the road comes to completion, there may be a couple more meetings per month, but on average it'll be about one meeting per month. And they'll work with the consultant and oversee the consultant throughout the entire drafting of the comp plan. And then the public as well as any body counselors, planning board members, our committee members are encouraged to, want to volunteer for the subcommittees that have the specific topic interest, if they have an expertise or an interest in a particular area within the comp plan. People can participate that way as well.
So do you see any barriers in terms of getting that steering committee formed rather than waiting? Because we put out the RFP, if we can get that committee in place, then we have a group that is, is charged with getting the process moving and working with the consultant. Do you have any concerns about that?
I don't have concerns about that. I just have to put together a process for actually forming that committee and get feedback on that process before we put it out. It'll most likely be some sort of application where people send in some credentials and say, well, unless like there's only two counselors who want to participate, then it'll be like those two counselors. But otherwise it'll be like an application process. It'll go through and see who has the time and the qualifications to kind of help out with that.
So with the planning board, when the planning board select their representatives, the council will select their representatives and then there would be a process for the community.
Yes.
To, to apply. So I guess that's, that's something that, could we target maybe next month in terms of our meeting to see where you're at with that structure?
Sure.
And in the interim, have members of the council think about whether you have an interest in participating on that? And then we can at least next month select the two representatives that will be part of that steering committee once, once it's up and running. But we can at least get that piece addressed so that we can keep this process moving. Does that seem reasonable?
That sounds good to me.
And I think it's important to kind of highlight that the council, counselors, individual counselors will have multiple opportunities to participate. Not only will the end result come back to the council for, for ratification, but as Matt pointed out, the steering committee will contain two counselors. But those subcommittees, any counselor who has an interest, like Mr. Stein, for example, for a small business, where he has a small business located in downtown Ellsworth, would, you know, be a strong candidate to participate at that level in that subcommittee and so on. So every counselor, even if you're not on the steering committee, will certainly have opportunities within the process to participate in areas of expertise to provide that, you know, that level of, of assistance to the plan going forward. So.
And just note, based on our earlier conversation, that this definitely is one of those communication points to the community of making sure that we do a really good job in advance of the steering committee. And the, the subcommittees, yes, but also I, I'm sure there's interest from people to want to participate as part of that steering committee.
Right.
Getting that out so that everybody knows that they, whatever that process is and giving everybody enough time and notice to, to apply for it and then go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question is, and maybe you can answer those. Is there a communications budget that's inside of this entire budget?
There, there is in a way. There's a certain amount of money budgeted and within the RFP, there's a requirement for public engagement. So when the consultant is doing all of these meetings and hearings, that they have to fulfill that portion of their contract as well, which involves robust public engagement, not just posting, but going to where people already are and trying to get feedback from them there, not just holding, you know, meetings in city hall, but bouncing around town to where people actually are meeting on their own.
Good evening, Gary Fortier. I had two other people here tonight, but they had commitments to have you out of here. I'm glad this meeting didn't start at seven. Some of you know, when I fell off the council table, I landed in the Hancock County Planning Commission, Commissioner's chair, I'm one of the 12. This is what we do. We do comprehensive plans. Allin Plopskot, Kastine, we're working with Walt Ham to get a contract with them. I brought our new young planner, Avery Varney, here tonight. Introduced her to some of you. But we would be interested in receiving one of your packets. I've cleared this with the commissioners. They are interested in doing, even if it's just select chapters. We have a couple consultants that are very good on the traffic management chapters. We write in some of those specifically. So to make a long story short, I'll have Matthew send the stuff to the office and we'll see if there's part of it we can help you with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Wasn't there an ad out about, something about the comprehensive plan, so looking for input from different organizations or something? I'm sorry, I couldn't find it. Oh, okay. I thought I saw an ad for it.
John Linehan, I think the comprehensive planning department is another example of too much government overreach and the growth of government. I believe the city of Ellsworth should eliminate that department. I believe right now that the planning board, the code enforcement is more than sufficient to handle anything we have down there. So I would like to see the size of government at all levels, including city government, shrunk back down to size. And I think it needs to happen, the city of Ellsworth, from a financial budget point of view. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Is there any action on this?
No.
Nope.
Not tonight. We'll revisit it in December for... And then item 18, council comments. This is an opportunity if a counselor wants to take a few moments to speak on anything.
Can we, I just want to make a comment on Mr. Wellman. I know that he's been working really hard on this, but he kind of left here and we left him without direction, 60 days or 90 days, or I just feel like, you know, we, we didn't make a motion, we didn't do anything to, to give him the direction that he was looking for, to, to be able to work with his neighbors.
Yep. Yeah. I agree. We could give him, I, I think he'd be like 90 days, we give him at least 90 days, and he's, he's very, very accommodating. He will help and do, like, he's bringing in his clean shavings, and I really believe that that was a lot of the odor elimination that had taken place since he started utilizing those.
Yeah. I mean, listening to what he had to say, I just felt that it seems like he's been trying, but he's made a couple of mistakes, but he comes back and tries to work with them. And I just would like to, you know, if we could give him 90 days or, you know, that would be, that would be great. I know it, we probably can't go back and vote again, I'm not sure, but if we just kind of moved on without a decision for him.
Give him 90 days and bring it back in like March or something and talk about it some more, and hopefully it's gotten better.
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't know what we're, I mean, I, I think for city staff to be working with him so that it improves the, the whole situation for everybody, I think that was, is very appropriate, makes sense. I just, for, for me, I, I don't know what it means to give him 60, 90 days when, or what. There's, the, the or what isn't there. I didn't hear any, there's nothing that we can do in terms of, of taking action, and there was nothing that was put on the table to take specific actions. So I, I think giving the process time is, makes sense, but I, that's why I didn't...
I just thought if we, you know, asked him to come back in 90 days with, with his plan and, and with an update of, of what's happened and how things are working and what the neighbors are thinking about, if we could just have some kind of a, I'm sorry, I meant it, I was going to, but then we moved on quickly, so.
That's what I have.
I missed my opportunity.
Didn't you say the attorney suggested 60 days?
He said 60. Yep.
Yeah. Just to add to your thought, I have, you know, just because he said 60 doesn't mean that 90 is not sufficient. I'm just a little discouraged that it smells after this one-year process, but...
Yes.
Just because the attorney said 60 and the city feels that 90 is adequate, I think that's great. I don't want to see the guy get hurt. I just, I'm tired of listening to the other members of that community.
He may have been misled by people stopping filing the reports, too. I mean, he didn't realize possibly, I'm not going to say he did or didn't realize, but possibly he didn't realize that the smell was so bad that people were, because they stopped sending the reports. And the state may have said, "Hm, well, it must be solved itself because we're not getting reports anymore."
We don't want the state coming down on the guy. We want to fix it.
Right. So if we could just, like, have a report back in 90 days.
Probably it would get better, yeah. I really do think he's trying.
So we can't, we can't, so, because we've already, this is not, this is just general discussion, it's, there's no vote on this because we can't. It was already discussed on the agenda, so we'll take it at that and...
I'll bring him back in February. I mean, in March.
Can I just throw something out? Is there any way that we can turn around and get the state out of this and let it just be a, a city issue?
We don't have the authority to license.
So let's...
Okay, there's no one. Okay.
Anybody else, no, that's fine. That's, that's a good point. Anybody else want to make a comment? Counselor Hall.
I'm not asking for any, any comments or suggestions. I just want to throw out that the, the city police thing, and I've sent this to the council prior to this council being seated, but the city police thing, there was so much pushback from the community. I'm involved in initiating the lawsuit to follow the procedures that the city has laid out in the procurement policy and in the charter. This might be a great time in, in this process to think about this. This building was occupied, from what I'm told, by the Historical Society in 1935. That's 87 years ago. 67 of those years, it seems to have been adequate. The last 20 seems to have been inadequate with getting crowded and crowded and crowded. Maybe through all of this aggravation and anger in the community is the time to move, to really get serious about a public safety building with a referendum in June on a number that let the city people vote if they're interested in stepping up to a certain debt level and building a new facility for the police and fire and ambulance, if there's such a thing, and get the citizens' input in the referendum in June when the school goes up. I'm not suggesting going out with a big plan and fancy drawings and all of this stuff. I'm, I'm talking about a budgetary number that could get some direction from the city because certainly the cities wound up about this, or the residents are wound up about the police thing. Without that, we may not have had the opportunity to do this, but we're here, and it's, it's worthy of getting the citizens' input on updating, upgrading, doing something more significant than is on the table now. Because certainly, it seems that the citizens are wound up about this decision. Let's get their input and see if there is a level of support at a certain number that we could work with as a council.
So, just for the record, and you just said it, since you filed the lawsuit, we are not able to have any conversation on that topic period.
Exactly.
So you're free to...
But I can comment, yeah.
You're free to comment, but I want the public to know why we're not responding is that, is a lawsuit and we're not able to have conversations about that.
I, I'd like to say one thing. There's 8,500 taxpayers in this town, and I've had six people mad at me about this decision.
All right, so I'm just going to, I know, but I, I don't want to open the, the door. This, this time is for, to comment, make a comment on issues, not to get into debates on issues. So if we have no other comments, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in paper.
Don't leave. I need a second. I need to go.